Good, didn't?
Well, I say, we're very welcome to stay.
We'll call this meeting to order. We've got some folks in the hallway, they're welcome to come in, but it is six o'clock, and so we need to follow our schedule. We do have a forum, have we heard anything from Mr. Doody? Hopefully he will be able to comment on a matter. All right, invocation Reverend Richardson, if you would, please. Let us pray.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we can come together and sit around this table, Lord Father, just to do the business of the district. Father, we just ask that you guide and direct us in the decisions we have to make tonight. Father, that we hold what is best for children at heart, that, Father, that we look to seek to better our community. And, Fathers, you guide and direct us, just help us make wise decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Approval of the minutes, you have received the minutes from January 7th, regular and closed session. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? May I have the motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion aye. Do we have any changes to the, or adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have just one change, and that is for an item we had listed as information, to make that an action item regarding Board Committee Assembly.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. All right, very good. And that is it, okay, great. All right, special recognitions or presentations?
Absolutely. Gentlemen, will you join me, Mr. Red Parker?
All right, go ahead. Tonight, we're very proud to start off by recognizing some very special educators. First, congratulations to Ms. Kimberly Allison.
Yeah.
Ms. Kimberly Allison has been named the WRAL Teacher of the Week. Her work has been showcased in a video segment which is featured on the WRAL website. Ms. Allison is an eighth grade math teacher at G.C. Holly Middle School and is also our 2019 Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Allison. Next, please join me in recognizing a very special athletic coach from South Granville High School, Coach Jackie Day. Coach Day has been named the 2017-18 North Carolina Coach of the Year for Girls' Softball Fast Pitch. The National Federation of State High School Associations. Congratulations, Coach. Next, we have three very special teachers here with their even more special students. The Virtual Enterprise Program is a worldwide role-playing entrepreneurial program where students buy and sell virtual products with other high school students from around the world in a closed virtual economy. This highly competitive program provides opportunities for our students to showcase their business skills and their soft skills. This year, Virtual Enterprise International recognized the top 50 firms from around the world, and one firm from each of our high schools is included in the top 50 list. Quite an accomplishment. Thousands of other students around the world. First, from Granville Central High School, Mr. Alan Bullock, absent, and the CEO of his firm, Loomy, Ms. Megan Gurken. Next, from South Granville High School, Teacher Mark Jones and the CEO from his firm, Adrenaline Rush. Webb High School, Teacher Marcy Winborn and the CEO from her firm, ACIS, Christopher Brandon. Now, we have some more honors from this same population of students. Virtual Enterprise International students recently participated in the North Carolina Business Plan Competition at Wake Tech Community College, where they went head-to-head with other firms from around the state in the Business Plan Competition. Anyone out here seen the show Shark Tank?
Yes.
Yeah, that's basically it.
That's good.
It was pretty impressive. And South Granville High School took first and second place in this competition. Once again, that's by Mark Jones from South Granville High School and his students. First and second place, his student certificates. And his students, we have Joe Callis. Genesis Harrell. Yvonne Jones, absent. And now we have our first-place winners from the firm Adrenaline Rush. Kayla Clark. Andrew Shamer. These first-place winners will soon be traveling to New York City to compete in the International Trade Fair and compete on the big stage. So best of luck. That concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Very important. A lot more gentleman.
All right. I would like to recognize the pastor, Reverend Steve Hargrove, to come forward from the White Rock Missionary Baptist Church. And his wife, Mr. Hargrove. Mr. Hargrove and their congregation have contributed immensely to the schools in our district as well as supporting staff members. They are our partners.
I will add that we are fortunate in our community to have many partners, but this particular church has not only done one or two things. They provided supplies to all of our teachers at West Oxford Elementary School. They were thrilled to receive the supplies, members from their congregation came. They donated books to Northern Granville Middle School. And then for our faculty and staff holiday social, they came in and cooked a good old country breakfast and didn't charge us a dime. So we are most appreciative of our partners from White Rock Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, tonight we have two members that have signed up for public comment. The first, Mr. Reed Daniel, has reserved his speaking time tonight in advance. And, Mr. Daniel, when you're ready, you'll have five minutes. I'll begin the timer. And your topic is Joe Toler.
Good evening. Dr. Houlihan and board, Dr. McLean and staff, thank you for this talk again. This has not been easy or pleasant, but the time has come to move on. In the last five months, and especially in the last four weeks, I have learned a lot. I now know more about educational operations than I ever wanted to know. I have also learned and shared with my neighbors that this was not a simple decision for any of you. The complex nature of a school closing goes much deeper than I love my school and we don't have the money. Dr. Houlihan, Mr. Richardson, Dr. McLean, and Ms. Day, my colleagues and I came here a week ago in a Hail Mary attempt to rattle your cage and make you second-guess your decisions. Our hope was that we could foster some doubt that all options had not been explored. You showed us that this is your best option, and please understand that although our tactics were tough, I can assure you, our motives were pure. Dr. Houlihan and Mr. Richardson, thank you for your openness and your transparency and your willingness to debate us face-to-face and toe-to-toe. Dr. Winborn, the speed and accuracy and completeness that you were able to grant out of obscure, complex, and tedious records requests was very impressive. Thank you very much, sir. Beth, my friend of three decades, as always, my dear, your numbers are flawless. They have been checked, double-checked, rechecked, and checked again. They agree in every direction. I could not find an error if I wanted to. Dr. McLean, your grace under fire is second to none. There is a profound difference between worthy adversaries and bitter enemies. I hope that we can all agree to always be the former and never the latter. The time has come on. We all have work to do.
Mr. Chairman, next we have Mr. Eddie McCoy of 405 Kingsborough Street. And his topic tonight is Toler School. Mr. McCoy, when you're ready, I will start in five minutes. Yes, sir, I certainly will.
I'm Eddie McCoy, and I'm a concerned citizen. I'm not representing no organizations, no community. I represent myself. Everybody else will know that. Okay, the reason I'm here tonight is to set the record straight. In 1939, Mr. Toler gave the county and its school system three acres of land. And when the deed was written, you know what was on it? The lawyer did this. He put $10 on it. Mr. Toler, now, they couldn't read. He put $10 on it. I got three copies, I got the deeds. He put, they put $10 on it. Okay. You came back in 1951, you want to build another school, a high school, a bit taller. They drew up the deed, and the attorney put $10 on that deed. If he had gave Mr. Toler a copy of the first deed, someone would have read it and said, you got this $10 on that deed. He put $10 on it. But he gave the land, but he put $10 on it. When you went back in 1951, the man gave him 15 acres for the school. You know what happened? The lawyer put $10 on this, on this deed. Okay. In 1990, that was 30 acres, 30 acres. Somehow, someone, I don't know, came up with the idea of that. Someone didn't pay the taxes, the family, somebody didn't pay the taxes on the property. So the shenanigans, and what they did was took the 30 acres, but they gave the school nine acres of that, 30. Okay, now, Rita came tonight at Bible King Grill and told you that Mr. Toler gave this land. And everybody's done all the books and everything, and said, Mr. Toler gave the land. And everybody would tell you, he gave the land for the building school, which he did. But the attorney put $10 on each one of the deeds. Now, what you do is ask your attorney, why did he put $10 on each one of the deeds? You ain't either counting no deed. Okay, the reason he did that is technicality. Now, what I went to school board to do, you don't have to do it, I think that the attorney and this board should decide about the $10 and who gets the profit. Okay, now, when I was at the school board, at the board last month, I think sometime when you're a board member, you got an attorney. Your attorney is, when you only got a board, you have an attorney. And you always use your attorney and not yourself. In 1983, I ran for county commission, it was five of us ran. We won. You know what happened? They withdrew it and said, was he legal? What they did was, we sued.
Two minutes, sir.
We sued. The county said, you the one made the motion, that get rid of the, get rid of the four to six years, make it to four. The federal government, you have a lawsuit, it's under, you understand? This is under, this, your board, your attorney can go to the school, go to the Board of Education, go down to the Board of Election, and then Ms. Bernick, she will tell you, we under Justice Department. This school board been under Justice, the county been under Justice Department, and the county sets the board the amount of time you serve, two, four months, or three. You just can't just say, I, we just vote this damn vote. Your board members have to decide that. And finally, in the Arch of Public Magic, there were a school teacher, 25 years, I don't take that man been teaching 25 in this, in this county, and you just separate the minorities, and you ain't got that many, you know? She said that she didn't think that the, that the three black schools in this county is that much historic. I would like for that teacher, and superintendent, everybody, get that lady to teach black history. She never teach black, of course, in black history. That's all she have to do. Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent's report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Staff, Parents, Students, Guests, Faculty. This week is National School Council of Week, so join me in saluting and thanking all of our wonderful Granville County Public Schools Councilors who impact students every day. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much for that. My, what a January it was, and we're launching into February. So you'll find at your table, thanks to Ms. Pettiford this evening, little boxes of heart candy, so we hope that brings a little love in the room tonight. We thank Ms. Pettiford for that. From our recent winter job fairs and school showcase of schools events, to our preparation for an execution of our federal audit, which took place, and I got on Friday, it went exceptionally well, and our historical first State of the Schools address, whereby we had incredible attendance by various departments, our Board of Education, county commissioners, other elected officials, and from both legislative bodies, January had us on the move. I'd also like to thank everyone who joined us for our winter graduation. We held that at the end of January. In your folders tonight, gentlemen, you will find the year-round survey results as promised. It's on that turquoise paper, sort of the lighter blue paper, in your folder. You will also find a document with all of our school resource officer positions filled. I'd like to thank the Sheriff's Department and our school principals for their work on making certain we have SROs covering all of Granville County Public Schools. Also, in your folder tonight, you'll find the new, I mentioned to you, we began this in January, a memo with all board requests that have come our way, and you will find documents attached for your perusal. One document I'd like to bring to your attention is the recent resolution around calendar flexibility, gentlemen. That was a request by a board member. Other districts have taken a look at it. You have examples in your memo packet, but I'd like for you to look at that turquoise blue color sheet of paper. That is the resolution we'd like to send our county commissioners to join us in this calendar flexibility business, as well as the letter we would send our legislators from myself. So we can talk about that later, but I wanted you to have access to that. In addition to these big educational events, as you know, our board made the decision to address efficiencies as requested and voted to capture over $778,000. Since that time, our district staff have worked to ensure our faculty and staff and students and our families were attended to. As such, the following have occurred. On January 8th, the very next morning following the recent events, our executive senior staff went over to meet with our Mary Potter Middle School at 8:00 a.m., and we met with the Joe Toler staff at 3:30 p.m. that same day. The purpose of the visits were to make certain our staff had the opportunity to hear directly from us about what occurred and to offer support. On January 14th, our executive senior staff went over to meet with the faculty and staff at Northern Granville Middle School to offer the same quality information and support. On the morning of January 27th, our Human Resource Department, Mr. Perry and Dr. Winborn, took a little continental breakfast to Toler Elementary and held what was called HR Support Conferences with every faculty and staff member who desired. The purpose was to afford our staff the opportunity to confidentially speak about how they felt and where their preferences for placement were next year. Later that same afternoon, our district hosted what we called a combined luncheon for the faculty and staff from both Mary Potter Middle School and Northern Granville Middle School. The purpose of the event was for getting to know one another, to reappoint with one another, and to simply eat and try to have a little fun on a teacher workday. Last week, I had the opportunity to sit in on the second meeting of the web design team, which has been charged with looking ahead and planning for the new combined facility in the year 2021. The group is comprised of administrators, teachers, students, parents, and district staff. Recently, I've also been privileged to meet with the Mary Potter Design Team Steering Committee. We have met twice and have now confirmed members of that design team, which will be charged with helping the district design how to address the heritage of that institution, select programs and/or occupants of the existing facility as requested, and determine the future of the site, keeping sustainability in mind. Further, it is important to note that our children and their families impacted by the recent decisions will have the opportunity to consider the many wonderful choices in our district, and we will do our best to accommodate each of them. These steps are critically important in contributing positively to the recent changes and transition that is upon our school system. It's not always what you do, it's how you do it that matters. Since we last met, our staff had the opportunity to join the county's Human Relations Commission as well, and we shared a financial update. We hosted wonderful questions and hope we will all work together since we are approaching budget season. Now, let me share some of what is to come. We are excited that on February 5th, our pre-K and kindergarten registration window opens. Parents may visit any of our elementary schools this year for forms. We will host our pre-K and kindergarten registration fairs on both February 12th and February 19th. We welcome all families to join our Granville County Public Schools family. Coming soon will be our new parent universities and updated website for student and parent use. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to meet our new district-wide parent liaison, Mr. Keon Furnas, as the result of a grant. Also coming soon is our district-wide focus on restorative justice practices and resilience training for all of our faculty and staff. Finally, as we launch into second semester, I would like to remind everyone that it is registration season for all of our schools, so please visit them. I would personally like to thank everyone who came out to our recent showcase of schools, formerly known as our Choice Fair. Please recall, nearly all of our schools offer some sort of choice and are definitely unique in their own way. I am convinced there is a school that fits everyone. Finally, our district will begin work around equity in April. Again, I am proud to report this evening just how on the move we are in Granville County Public Schools. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Okay, board members, any reports from any board members?
I've got two, actually. First of all, Dr. Houlihan and I attended the North County School Board Association Indoctrination for New Board Members on January 7th and 8th in Raleigh, and briefly cover what was discussed there. Mr. Ed Dunlap, I think we all know, the executive director, started off the address to new board members, and he, it was an entertaining and informative address, and basically, the message he came across with was, to all new board members, do not ever embarrass anyone at a board meeting. And number two, when the school board meeting becomes the best show in town, then you're not doing your best for students. So basically, his message was to new board members was to remain professional and dispense with any personal comments that might be hurtful to anyone. The, let's see, oh, and do nothing at all, that would erode the public's trust in the Board of Education. That trust is sacred, and we need to maintain that trust with the community. There was another very good presentation about who's responsible, the board or the superintendent. And from that, a worksheet came out, about 25 questions. And I have that, we have an interesting copy, Dr. Houlihan and I grabbed at a retreat at some point. I think it might be interesting to go ahead and go over there, it'll take about five or 10 minutes, but it's a real quick review of where our responsibilities begin and end, and where the superintendent's responsibility is beginning and end. Let's see, we had a discussion on common liability issues, and liability regarding firing of employees, injury, contracts, very detailed, won't go into detail on that though, however. The next day, we had ethics of school board members, conflicts of interest. Takeaway there was, if there is any conflict of interest, that you want to immediately recuse yourselves. This is not really a problem if a contract's being discussed for your brother's company, but you just need to recuse yourself from that immediately and not, not try to hide that. We discussed the North County School Board Association's legislative efforts and what's going on. Specifically, they're trying hard to get the funding for capital improvements that has been on hold for, I guess, since 2000 recession. So that's a big agenda item for them. Let's see, and that, that's kind of a good summary of the, of the meeting we attended. Dr. Houlihan, did I miss anything?
You didn't miss a thing. You had covered it.
Second thing is, all of you all should have seen, Ms. Doobson forwarded to us, a paper from Dr. Helen Ladd from the Sanford School of Public Policy at Duke University. The next day, we had ethics of school board members, conflicts of interest. Takeaway there was if there is any conflict of interest, you want to immediately recuse yourself. So it's not really a problem if a contract's being discussed for your brother's company, but you just need to recuse yourself from that immediately and not try to hide that. We discussed the North County School Board Association's legislative efforts and what's going on. Specifically, they're trying hard to get the funding for capital improvements that has been on hold for, I guess, since 2000 in recession. So that's a big agenda item for them. Let's see, and that's kind of a good summary of the meeting we attended. Dr. Hulahan, did I miss anything?
You didn't miss a thing.
Second thing is, all of you all should have seen Ms. Dubson reported to us a paper from Dr. Helen Ladd from the Sanford School of Public Policy at Duke University and co-authored with Mr. John D. Singleton from the Department of Economics at the University of Rochester. I plowed through this over the weekend, I read it twice and really studied it, and I spent a lot of hours actually crunching the numbers, because I really thought this is a very well-vetted research paper that was peer-reviewed. And it came up with a formula that shows the additional penalties that traditional public schools suffer due to the loss of students to charter schools. And I, using the budget data that I had at home, which and I'll caveat this, my data was extracted from the proposed 2018-19 budget, from some 17, 18 numbers, and from some older numbers. So I didn't have the actual official numbers, but I looked at what I had and came up with the best estimation. The formula that determines the penalty that we're paying for each student that we lose to charter school is predicated on two factors, and one is it measures your fixed costs in a way. It takes your money you get from local and state, state and local funding, for us it's about $7,051, I could determine, I could be wrong, that's what I figured out. And from that, you subtract your variable costs per student. And the variable costs per student are basically the things we use to educate students, teachers, CTE, AIG, professional development, all of those things that are just core focused on educating students. So the lesson there is if we can reduce our fixed costs and increase our teacher costs, in other words, hire more teachers, then the penalty we suffer goes down. That amount is multiplied by a ratio of the number of students going to charter schools divided by the total number of students going to public schools. So it's our traditional public school number added to our charter school number, and you divide that into the charter school number. So you get a percentage, you know, we're roughly something like 1/8 or so, you know, about 12, 14% of our students in this county go to charter schools. So that's the multiplicative factor. So if we reduce the number of students going to charter schools, then our penalty goes down. If we reduce our fixed costs, our penalty goes down. And the fixed costs basically are buildings. So the fewer buildings we have and the associated costs, and the more teachers we have, the less the penalty. Well, I calculated it, and I feel fairly confident in the calculation, because we came out right in the middle of the five counties that were in that report. So we're, you know, we're not outlining it in any way. And I would guess it, you know, put a plus minus 10 or 20% error, but the bottom line is that our yearly penalty, and this is money that is gone, is lost, is $1.7... That is money that we lose every year, and that money is lost in empty classrooms that we have to heat. It's lost in extra custodial service for rooms that have no students in it. It's lost for capital outlay to repair roofs that are over classrooms that have no students. The charter schools don't get that, and we don't get that. It's the fact that we have too many buildings in this county and not enough students. If we look at what the per cost for every student we lose to a charter school, it's around $1,467 in addition to the state and local funding. So instead of losing $7,000, we're losing $8,500 just about. So it's very important, and it was a Godsend, and I thank you so much for sending. What I would like to ask the board is I would like for, and I know you know Dr. Ladd, I know Ms. Dubson knows Dr. Ladd, I would like an introduction, I would like to go speak with her, take our data for the variable costs, it's about 10 or 12 items, and have her run the numbers and verify what our penalty actually is. And I think that her algorithm could be a very good predictive tool to help us figure out what is the sweet spot for capacity. You know, it's right now, we're at 56% capacity district-wide. If we can find out where the sweet spot is where we get rid of this penalty, which means all of our money now is going to educating children, it may help us, it may guide us in our difficult decisions we have with looking at further school consolidations. And clearly, these decisions are difficult. We can't afford to close too many schools and then get a population bump, and same goes again, we cannot continue to afford to heat and maintain empty classrooms. So this is, it was an idea, I had no idea that the penalty was so much greater than just the loss of our AD input. So if the board has no problems, I would like to maybe go personally sit down and talk to all that issues available and make sure that we are getting the right information for our district.
Do any board members have any objection to him doing that?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need to.
I just wanted to not do it without the board's approval.
Thank you. You did a good job reading through all that, because it's not easy to read through. I got through the first three pages and quit.
It's a really valuable piece of worship. It really is.
Okay, yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. McLean for her state of the school address. I thought it was phenomenal. There was no stones left unturned, and it was explained very thoroughly, and I'm just waiting to see how she outdoes her set next year. Second, I'd like to thank Mr. Perry, Mr. Wilkins, Dr. Myers, and Dr. Winborn. This month, I've received several complaints from parents, teachers, and I think they jumped right on them quickly and handled them very professionally. There is one issue that I would like to bring up tonight. One of the complaints were about the teachers tutoring at Mount Energy School, and they were tutoring after school, and they were receiving payment from the parents for it, and they were having to rent the facility, and they were using the money, I think they were using the money they were getting for the rental, I mean, for their fees to pay for the rental, but now it stopped, and they are trying to figure out how they can continue, because they said that the kids were really excelling from this tutoring. The parents are upset because, of course, the tutoring stopped. My question is, is there anything that we can do to help them continue the tutoring, dealing with the rental contract that we have for outside entities, even though they are our teachers, and I know they're getting paid from an outside entity? Is there anything we can do to help them? And Dr. Myers was very helpful. We went over every avenue that they could do other than me asking the board what we can do.
That's what I'm talking about with our attorney. Yeah, it's great. It's very good. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not a court, this is an observation, and I'd like to request some assistance. And this is an observation, and I'm happy to see the reporter here from the Button Creekwood News, Ms. Penny Carpenter, someone who I consider a friend, and we've spoken on a number of occasions. And I understand, Ms. Carpenter, you are in essence the messenger, so this is not about shooting the messenger, this is about just pointing out the situation. On the 31st of January, I think I forwarded to Dr. McLean and maybe you, Dr. Hulahan, an article that I saw online by WRL, and the title of it was Charter Schools Growth Forces Closure of Two Bramble County Schools. And I read it, and I wondered, where do they get that information? And I reflected back to a byline in the Button Creekwood News that basically indicated the loss of students to charter schools forced us, forced the Board of Education for Bramble County to close schools. And what I'm requesting, Ms. Carpenter, and to all of the local media, is to help us. And we talked about this just very briefly during leadership Bramble attendance before the meeting officially started tonight. The point that I'd like to have you to emphasize is that the citizens are not aware of the issues that go into the decision-making. And I understand as far as editors or general managers, you know, they might make calls that are beyond your control as a reporter. But when I sit down and think about being able to connect the dots, we have schools that have been low performing, we have roofs that have been leaking, we have lost teachers. Losing students to charter schools is not a direct impact on those. Losing students to charter schools certainly was one of the issues or aspects that needed to be considered. And as Mr. Rivers just said, to get more information about the impact of losing students will be helpful. But we need the media to help us get the word out, and the media to connect the dots. In other words, I remember earlier, well, last year, the superintendent went to the county commissioners and asked for $26 million. We haven't lost that many students to charter schools to where we would need $26 million to fill, to address infrastructure needs. The point is, it's just not losing students to charter schools. There's more involved. And when stories come out, they need to at least mention the various aspects. And perhaps, Dr. Winborn as the PIO for the district and for our superintendent, maybe you need to put together an article and send it to the editor or the general manager or whomever, and let them know that it is a compilation of issues that drive us to the decisions that we have to make, not just a single issue that required us to make the decision that we did. That would be not only a tremendous help to the Board of Education, you would be helping the community immensely. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
WRL also had a program on about this, but didn't specifically say Bramble County. But I think they did very well explaining that school boards are having to make tough decisions because of the lack of support from the federal and state government, county officials, and charter schools. You know, charter schools is just not one that's a band from all of them that is making us do what we have to do. So I think they did very well in explaining that on the TV. Had enough time to do that.
And along that line, you have an article that's been sent to you that was named by North Carolina Policy Watch. They are an organization in Raleigh, a nonprofit that does reviews policies, statewide policies, and they took a look at our county. In fact, the man who wrote the article used to be a reporter for Henderson Daily Dispatch. So when they were looking around to look at school systems, they took a look at us. What's interesting about that article when you read it is that it really has generated a real, what's the right term, a real, it's kind of like we've been talking policy at the state level about charters and their impact on schools and all that kind of stuff. And when the reality of school systems like Bramble and Franklin and Scotland and other school systems, when there's something real happening and people can see it, it does raise some real questions, and we clearly are a part of that. I mean, State Board of Education, all kinds of folks are beginning to get in with this. Mr. Rivers, when you talk about the issue of all this stuff with Helen, and Helen Ladd and all that, and what you're talking about, and students, people do not understand how the financial aspect, not just one little bit, but how that has caused such issues. When you tell a reporter or somebody that we have dollars going out of this county for charters, how many charters roughly do we send money to, Ms. Day?
I guess 20-some, I mean, close to there.
20-some charter schools. People are stunned about that. So I think the genie is coming out of the bottle with the reality of charters really are having an impact on us in a variety of ways. And keep your eyes open, this thing may involve and go somewhere, and it's about time. Okay?
Just on a humorous note, at the North County School Board Association meeting in early January, there was a lot of rural counties represented there, and they're all having to close schools. Scotland County is closing 11 schools, you said Salisbury is closing 16 schools. Vance County's had to close one of the two high schools, Northern Vance High School is gone. But there was a nice gentleman from Burdie County, an older gentleman, and he told me that he was, their school board was forced to close the elementary school that his wife had attended many, many years ago, and his daughter had attended, and now she's full grown on her own. And he said to me, "My wife did not speak to me for a month. It was a year ago, and she's barely speaking to me now." So, you know, we're not trying to make light of a very complicated situation, but it is a very heartbreaking situation we're in. But we're not the only county facing it. Every rural county in North Carolina, and some of them are facing a lot stronger challenges than we are.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, and I'm just going to turn this over to you and let you run with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased in the area of academics this evening to have some guests with us tonight from Bramble Health Systems. Dr. Michael Myers, will you introduce our guests who've been working to help us with our issue around athletic trainers? We were nervous about a year ago at what we found out, but tonight we have some good news. Our partners, we'll talk about it.
It's Dr. Hulahan, good evening, board. Dr. McLean, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. John Snow and Mr. Jason Grant from Bramble Health Systems. We are ordering a partnership with them starting this spring. And Mr. Timberlake, you can come on up as well, our district athletic director, and they want to just talk briefly about the partnership that we are going to have with Bramble Health Systems.
Thank you, Secretary Lieutenant McLean, Dr. Myers, Mr. Timberlake, Dr. Hulahan, and the board. Again, my name is Jason, one of the administrators at the hospital, along with Mr. Johnson, our CEO. At Bramble Health Systems, our mission is to provide the community that we serve with the very best health care delivered with compassion and pride. We believe this starts in our community where you and I live, work, and play. As such, we are excited about this opportunity for collaboration with Bramble County Public Schools to provide an important health and safety program to our student athletes participating in athletic practice and competition. Specifically, Bramble Health Systems agrees to employ in staff National Athletic Trainer Association certified athletic trainers or other qualified individuals for the upcoming school year at each high school. The following sports activities that we'll have our staff assigned to would be the junior varsity and varsity football practice and game coverage. Also, varsity event game coverage for the following competitions, girls volleyball, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball, baseball and softball, wrestling, and a JF web, also the high school lacrosse. Again, GHS looks forward to being the exclusive provider of athletic training to the Bramble County schools, and look forward to working with the athletic directors and the coaches to make sure there's continuity at each high school for this upcoming school year. Again, would you have to answer any questions that you might have?
Well, I think that we all are just amazed. I know we've been searching high and low to find people to cover this, and you all agree, we were really, really, we're so glad you're here.
Ford, I have to tell you, this is one of the most delightful things that's happened to us this year. As a former cheerleader myself, I tell Frankie I did run track, but he doesn't believe me. And as a mom of an athlete, you want to know that if something happens on that field or on that court, that you will get immediate attention for your child. And our neighbors right across the street, ever since Mr. Snow moved into the community not so long ago, have been nothing but incredible. So as a cheerleader, I'd say rah rah, this is worthy of a round of applause. We are excited and we thank you.
On behalf of our board, Jason and others who lead the program, we thank you for the opportunity, the trust that you place in our staff, and Jason and his leadership. Thank you, sir, for your support. We look forward to serving you and building partnerships as we go along the way, even stronger than we know it's going to be. stronger than we know it's going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yes, our next presentation is in the area of support services. Dr. Myrick, will you introduce this group this evening?
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce our students, members of our student support team. There's Dr. Tanya Thomas.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And Ms. Lily Ann Lemay, who's our district social worker, you can bet, Mr. Labor Forecone, and Mr. Keon Furnas. Dr. McLean mentioned him and her loss, and he is our new parent liaison. And these folks will take us through a very quick presentation this evening about some, just a snippet of the great things that they're doing for our families.
Okay. Good evening, thank you, Dr. Houlihan, members of the Board, and Dr. McLean for allowing us to come before you. This evening, we'll share a few updates with you from our student services department. About two years ago, we secured a Title V grant that allows us to coordinate health education, behavioral education for health services, and provide professional development for our student services department, which consists of our social workers, our counselors, and our nurses, and on occasion, our PE teachers. This grant has afforded us to have some of the listed services: mental health, first aid, is a mental illness and substance use training, our darkness to light is, allows us to look for and be able to recognize signs of child sexual abuse, Safe Talk recognizes signs of those who contemplate a suicide. And we've had ASSIST, which is a national recognized suicide prevention program. And ALI is one that has popped up very new, teaching our students how to be allies for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, transgender, and questioning youth. Okay, this grant has also afforded us to do what Dr. McLean mentioned earlier. This summer, we're going to be partnering with Crisis and Trauma Resource Institute. We will train 60 individuals from this district on, in the area of restored justice practices. And this focuses on how to change the adverse and disruptive behaviors of our students to help decrease suspension rate. We will also continue to partner with the juvenile crime prevention, and that is, the primary focus of the juvenile crime prevention is to have local government, local agencies, public and private, that work together to provide resources and support to keep our students out of the justice system. We still will continue to have a guidance counselor who leads the judicial attendance council, and that's where we provide resources and support for those students who are struggling with, actually for the parents who are struggling with getting their students to school, and they have excessive absences. And I am going to honor my boss's request and move one out of your way and turn it over to Ms. Lily Ann Lemay, and she will continue with our school-based mental health program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, good evening to the Board members, Dr. McLean, Dr. Beth, I mean Beth Day, Dr. Winborn, and Dr. Myrick. I'm here to talk about our school-based mental health services. So if you could, could you go to the next slide? Okay. So in August, we started developing our school-based mental health services. So what that looks like, looked like for us as a school district, we wanted to partner with mental health agencies to provide outpatient treatment services to our students who had mental health challenges that impaired their academic success. We currently partner with nine mental health agencies, and there are a few private practitioners that we partner with as well. So our therapists that come into our schools for students who have a barrier to academic success based on their mental health challenges, the therapists work with our students to provide symptom-based management skills to not only our students, but our families as well. We like to empower our parents to be involved with the students as far as their mental health challenges. That way, we have a bridge connected between our schools and our families at home. In addition to that, we partner with our local managed, local managed mental health organizations, which is Cardinal Innovations. They provide us with, they're providing us with trainings in terms of mental health first aid, also de-escalation trainings, trauma-informed trainings, so I'm excited about that. I would like to give you our numbers for the academic school year. So we've had a total of 70 school referrals made, which tells us that there is a tremendous need on mental health services. Out of those 70 referrals, we are, we were able to service 60 students. There are 10% of students that have not received services. However, we have found a solution to this barrier. We have a lot of families, well, particularly with the students that have been referred to mental health services, those families for one, may not have insurance, or may have a barrier in terms of affording the copays. So what we've done is hired a school social worker.
She started today.
Yes. Excited about that. She started today, and she will be servicing our students who do not have insurance or are, who are unable to afford mental health services. In addition to that, we just partnered with Innovative Behavioral Health Services. They are providing us, well, providing our families with sliding scale fees, so they have one of the lowest rates in terms of their copays. So the fact that they're willing to work with our families, it shows that, you know, there are some people who have a heart and also want to provide services to these students. That's all I have. I also have our brochures in Spanish and English for those who would like to review those. My contact information is on the back, as well as our mental health agencies that we are partnering with. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Keon Furnas. I am the parent liaison for Granville County Public Schools. I've come to you tonight to speak with you about my efforts in parent and family engagement and exciting opportunities that I will use to connect our families and to outreach to our families here in our wonderful district that is on the move. Parent University, Parent University will be linking parents and families to resources that support student achievement. Why this is important? The research shows that when there's a high level of parent engagement, children will have higher grades, improved test scores, and graduation rates will increase. Improved student attendance is another outcome, and there will be decreased discipline problems. I will be working with community support organizations, specialists, parents, and community leaders to design classes and workshops and activities that increase parent and family capacity. The kickoff for Parent University, I want you all to save the date. It will be April 30th at the Granville County Expo Center. I received confirmation that we're good to go on Friday from the Expo Center. It will be from 5:30 to 7:00, and the day will feature keynote addresses, student performances, and useful information to help get our parents connected to our district and help them complete the rest of this school year and have success. So I look forward to serving in this capacity, and you'll see marketing and other information about our exciting events in the months, weeks following. Thank you.
I failed to mention, also another kickoff for our restorative justice practices would be, if you would save the date, February 13th. We normally meet between 8:30 and 12:00. I think you get with Dr. Myrick as to when the film will actually be presented, but that is a film entitled Resilience, which is a documentary, a 90-minute documentary, which addresses the negative impact that adverse childhood experiences or ACEs can have on a student's cognitive ability as well as their physical health. So that will be February 13th, and that's going to be our kickoff to restorative practices initiative in Granville County.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Question?
Yes, I have, I have a couple of questions.
Say, can I ask you one?
Yeah. Give one for each one. First, as far as the parenting or parent and family engagement, are we partnering at all with public, Granville, Vance Public Health?
Yes, I intend to reach out to community liaisons and specialists to help have information and resources available for parents and families that night.
Because I believe they get a grant, they have a program specifically to reach out to parents, so that's good.
I want to mention, you've attended the WOW Coalition.
Oh, I attended the WOW Coalition, and I will become a member of that coalition so that I will be at the table for further discussions of how to get resources to the families and parents that we serve.
And our school nurses also have been working with Vance, excuse me, with the Vance Granville Health Department, and the information that you see go home to parents about influenza and things of that nature come to us through the Health Department.
Okay. Second question, boy, I was surprised to hear that number 70, that's almost 1% of our total student population for our district. So a significant number. The question that I have is, when you listed the various programs, like the Rains of Change and so forth, I'd like to know, do we provide any funding to support those juvenile crime prevention camps? I happen to know, that's something I know about. Do we provide any funding at all? In other words, you have Youth Villages, Rains of Change, Teen Court, Boys and Girls Club. Is there any funding, support to those?
They, those are community departments, and they are at no cost to.
They provide.
They provide staff and other opportunities for our staff as well and for our parents.
Well, those programs, a lot of them, not all of them, but are funded by Granville County Commissioners.
That's right.
So as a matter of fact, a county commissioner is a liaison to the JCPC.
Yes.
I serve in that capacity, so that is certainly something that we need to, we need to use those services to the greatest extent possible.
Mr. Furnas, might I add, that group used to meet here in the boardroom.
Absolutely.
And one of the things we changed last year when I came on board was, go out into the schools. So that group of all those individuals you see represented there now meet with our staff and be out in the schools, and it gives them a firsthand look at what's going on each month.
And Dr. McLean, typically a counselor from that particular school will come in and sit and observe the meeting, and they're given an opportunity to explain what the needs are for that particular population.
Okay. Final question, and let me just get our attorney's guidance on this. I'd like to ask a question about the students at Phoenix Academy. Is that something that asks you? In other words?
I'm not sure what the question is.
What a question is, as far as mental health, should we, okay? The question that I have is, out of the 70 referrals and 60 students, what percent of the students attending Phoenix Academy are participating in this?
Now, Calvin, Calvin, come join me on this because Principal Timberlake actually began his outreach with many of these agencies last year, and they have been working with our youngsters at Phoenix Academy now for two years. Will you talk about that for just a quick second?
Sure. We work closely with Angler Management, and they come in absolute, they come in every week. Every, every Thursday, we come in and they're in Fayetteville, you know, and we work with them and build up a Shepherd Youth Branch, and I know that's smarter than also the JCPC referral process, so we got to get the content.
So is every student in Phoenix Academy participating in Angler Management, or do you just identify?
Every student is a parent liaison.
Okay. Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Just, Mr. Rivers, a couple of questions. Lately, in the past few months, we've seen a number of very disturbing trends, suicides, suicide, you know, interventions that we've had. You mentioned 70 referrals, Mr. Menz mentioned 1% of our total student population. My opinion is, appears to me that we do definitely have a mental health problem, if not a crisis, in our county. We have it in our state, we have it in our nation, and as life is more complicated, it seems to be getting worse. Do we have the assets we need with just one social worker? Do we have the assets we need to adequately take care of the mental health issues with self-immolation, you know, the potential suicide violence reactions? Are we, are we, do we have enough? Are we doing enough?
I think a lot of that is channeled through our counselors, who have well-trained in suicide prevention, what cues to look for, and they're in the buildings on a daily basis, and they build relationships with some of the students. But to answer your question, I can only speak from what I've seen, we are at a dire need for student services, and so while I think we do a good job with what we have, we could certainly use more help in that area.
What I'll tell you, Mr. Rivers, is we were fortunate when Ms. Lily Ann Lemay came on board, but what she found out very quickly was, she didn't get to sit anywhere because there was always a crisis somewhere. So through some grant funds, we were able to get her a little help today. Of course, we started today, but even that, when you look at the magnitude of needs across our state, in particular our county, there is always room for more. So with this approaching budget season, one of the factors you will probably see again is our request for help with regard to social workers and psychologists in our county to try to meet the needs.
Right, and that's kind of where it's going. I spent the past Friday and Monday talking to counselors in two schools that are having some issues, and that's certainly the takeaway I have. And for the Board, I echo what Dr. McLean said, I think, you know, we're going to have to find the money to hire more social workers, school social workers who have the training to do the family interventions, to work with the children, because it is just a growing problem. The other thing I'd like to make sure we understand is that the community understands that there should be no stigma attached to mental illness, and that's also what I've learned, and there is, there is a real reluctance among many people to acknowledge that there is a problem. And I really think we need to get the message out, all of us here, this community, this school district, mental illness is an illness, just as cancer is an illness, or pneumonia is an illness. And it is treatable and treable, and you can leave a perfectly normal, healthy life. And there are certainly with young children, middle school, with these numbers of suicide attempts and suicide ideations that they, the counselors told me about, it doesn't mean that child is broken for the rest of its life. That child needs help and proper therapy can take care of the child. The child grows up, matures, and leaves a perfectly normal adult life. So we've really got to understand that mental illness is not something that we need to sweep under the rug or that we need to keep in a closet. It's there, it's prevalent in our society, and we really have to understand it is a sickness and not permanent, and it can be, in many cases, fixed. So I hope, I hope we can get that message out to the community not to be stigmatized by this.
If I can add, speaking of being an illness, it's really not something that you catch, like a cold that I've caught, because I'm suffering a terrible cold, and I'm trying not to touch anybody's hand tonight, don't get too close to you. But it's something that has been produced, a societal thing that has produced it. And I think we need to remember that, and that's one of the most important reasons why we do need funds and people to reach out in that aspect, to be able to bring those people back up to par equity, again, falls back in with that. When we just think of it as being an illness, and we just leave it like that, somebody will say, well, it's a born thing, it's a inherited thing, and it's not. It is a thing that has been produced in this nation and so many other nations. And I think when we look at it that way, correctly from wrong, when we look at it that way, that's one of the things that's going to lead us into reaching out to those kids. I just want to say that, because when we talk about illness, a lot of times we will push people off and put them in the closet, under the stigma of saying that's an illness. It is something in life that has produced this thing that we label now as an illness. And as being responsible for all the students of Granville County, I think that's what we need to look at, that way that we're reaching out to get those kids. It wasn't born that way, it didn't choose to become that way. It wasn't born that way, it didn't choose to become that way, but in a limited society that has made them that way, that's what worries us to go every step of the mile we can to reach out to those kids and make them productive citizens. That's how we get our presence from being so overpopulated, and that's how we bring our crime rate down. You tie a dog long enough, he'll bite you. So I look at it at that aspect, and I think we always need to throw that in, so that society and the community will have an aspect of that as well, because sometimes we think so do we in the community because we don't know it yet, we've heard and seen it so many times. And another thing I was gonna ask about it, when they say that it's, uh, seventy cases, and I heard Angler Management was talking about it, is each one of those, is Angler Management always the problem? Thank you, thank you, because I, I want us to know that this is a vast problem, and not just one situation, but a whole lot of things that make up the, uh, status of these students, right, who have so many different aspects to have, put them in the state where they're at. Okay, I, I thank you for what you're doing, I think it's a great marvelous thing, a community that we're playing for, want to do it, and those are what we're talking about, but I, I just want to say, I hope we keep that in mind when we think about that, that this is something that not only will help our, our children, but will help the community, it will help society in large, if we put those monies where they really need to be.
So I think you hit the nail on the head when you say, um, what they have been exposed to, and the big, big, um, research, uh, large amount of research around ACEs, those , uh, adverse childhood experiences that stick with the children, they may not remember it, but the body remembers the trauma, and so, um, that's the whole foundational framework and peaceful story of justice.
Great.
Thank you very much, great job.
We thought this would be helpful.
Very helpful.
Yes.
Great time.
It is, it is.
All right, turn it over to you, members of facilities.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I turn it over to Dr. Stan Windmore. Gentlemen, you asked in our last meeting for an update regarding facilities, Dr. Windmore.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight I have a presentation, you've all had a chance to look through it, so I will try to move through it rather quickly. Um, this is gonna focus primarily on HVAC and roofing, but it will shift to the larger topic as well. Um, just as a, as a reminder, uh, Mr. Menz, you referenced the twenty-six million dollars, we were, um, awarded the fifteen million, and we earmarked approximately ten of that for HVAC needs and five for roofing. Both of these fit that category of addressing air quality. I will make a note that under the umbrella of HVAC, we also have this issue of ceiling building envelopes, which trying to basically keep the outside air from creeping into the building, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But, uh, just to give you a roofing update, um, you know, we contracted with an engineering company, uh, we put out an RFQ and selected them to be our experts when it comes to spending this huge amount of money on roofing. They are providing all of the specifications and technical support for this work, they're overseeing the bidding process, and they're inspecting the work as it's done. I've been getting weekly detailed reports of the work, um, since they've been involved, um, they're doing a, doing a great job. But just so you know, this roofing is divided into three phases. We're paying this five million dollars for roofing. Phase one were our failed roofs, okay, these were in horrible disrepair. Those are being fixed as we speak, they are working on those. Phase two are the critical needs, those ones that are leaking or about to fail, and then phase three are the ones that are, um, getting close to the end of their life next time. So phase one, that's the stuff that's in progress, um, we've got about almost three-hundred-thousand dollars that we've spent on that, and those are a few sites, uh, Mary Potter, Creedmore, and Butler. The roof areas are not very large, but the condition of them was deplorable, just as it, as in the site. When you walk into Mary Potter, that main entrance, that roof up there is one of the ones they are replacing right now. So they're ripping off the old roofing, roofing, the insulation down to the, the roof sheathing, and they're replacing all that.
Wasn't that a fairly new roof?
It actually, uh, is about fifteen years old, yeah, and, uh, but it was beyond the warranty, went just past the warranty, and that's a product that now they're no longer using in the roofing industry. It's a, so, you're right. Phase two is the next huge project, that's almost four million dollars worth of roofing, and those bids will go out this spring, and that touches many more schools, um, you can see all of those there, and it touches many different types of roofs, and the roof area, the overall area of the roof is much larger. Um, and phase three will be the remaining schools, the engineering's gonna be taking place this spring and summer, and that'll probably be next academic year's work. So here's just a summary, basically, of, of how much money we've spent already. We've burned through about four-point-three million dollars already, and, um, phase three we really haven't gotten to yet, okay? So that five million, zoom. All right, next, HVAC. Again, we also contracted with an engineering company, put an RFQ out for them, selected them, and, uh, they have a great, uh, track record working with schools and other government, um, entities. Um, again, their work is mostly divided into three phases, give it the next slide. Phase one is complete, that's what we, when we celebrated, uh, the complete overhaul of HVAC systems at Creedmore and Butler Elementary, um, those systems are working great, we're excited about firing them up in the spring, and, um, one of the things that, aside from just new air conditioning systems, the school now has what's called positive pressure. So the air inside the school is greater than, than the pressure outside, so there's not this tendency for the outside air and humidity to creep into the school, which is a big cause of that mold problem, just outside humidity coming in. So that cost was two-point-two million. The next one, phase two, this has been ongoing, and this is all schools. We've spent about two-point-five million dollars, and this has been replacing chillers, boilers, pumps, valves, fan units. If you think about JF Webb High School or South Bramble High School, every classroom has pipes running to it, and then there's this unit hanging from the ceiling, that's a fan unit. So the cold water or the hot water goes in there, circulates, and a fan blows across the coils into the classroom. There were eighty-some units at JF Webb, we've had to touch every single one of those units, replace valves that are wrong, we've had to go in and clean the coils that were corroded, the switches, I mean, it's, it's very, very labor intensive, and so we're doing that across the district. We're also updating the, the thermostats, like here on the wall, in every classroom, we're having to touch those, and then we're now able to not just measure the temperature, but we're able to measure the humidity in our schools. Plus, we can now do this remotely, so up the hill in the maintenance shop, we have three computer terminals, and our guys can get on, go to a school, go to a certain area of the school, and check the status, and now those numbers are accurate. Before, they weren't necessarily accurate.
This is a big deal, gentlemen, this is a big deal.
It would say seventy degrees, but you go to the school and it would be fifty degrees.
Stan, you're talking about South Bramble and Webb, and I was just at, uh, Holly on Friday, and, and we see these pipes and, and the fan units, how efficient or inefficient are those compared to modern technology?
They're horribly inefficient.
Okay, so why are we spending money to fix them instead of replacing them?
Because the cost to replace them would be more than the value of the entire school, in essence. Yeah, it's really...
That's a great explanation.
It's absolutely not recommended.
But, the, the problem is, we're, we're, we're spending, well, I know we kind of choice, but what's, what's frustrating is we're spending money on a system that we're gonna be paying money every year in utility costs.
Correct.
More money than we...
Correct.
So it's a gift that keeps on giving us every year.
It is, it certainly is, and that's because, you know, these, what they call two-pipe systems, they either run hot water or they run cold water, okay, the same pipes, you have to turn them off and switch it over. Those are nineteen-sixty technology, okay? Um, you know, when you build a new school now, and you would use forced air, basically like a heat pump, only on a much larger scale, that's what you would put in a new school.
And you're saying that to, to refit Webb and South Bramble would be prohibitively expensive?
Yeah, you really probably wouldn't be able to do it in a lot of those places because there's nowhere to put the ductwork. I mean, and then the structure, the structure, the structure of the school itself would need to support units on the roof, and then, you know, I mean, it just, the design of the building wouldn't lend itself well to that type of HVAC system.
And that's the problem, because those designs back in the forties, fifties, and sixties...
Yeah.
...are not conducive to modern industrial efficiencies.
Yeah, they, they weren't, they didn't have air conditioning on the building.
No, no, I was in school.
They were just heat, you know, so, and there's no insul-, a lot of times they're lacking insulation too. So anyway, we've spent about two-point-five million so far, and we're still working. So we have, you know, we, we are, we are uncovering lots and lots and lots of issues with this.
Stan, one more question, I hate to bug you on this, but those units at Webb and South Bramble and I hate Holly, if all you're doing is having a coil...
Yes.
...and you're, you're having a fan that blows air across either a hot coil or a cold coil...
Correct.
Where's the water separation occurring?
So if, there is what's called a reheat mechanism that actually heats the air before it is cooled in the, in the wintertime, and that removes the moisture. Also, we are, what we did at...
But moisture then is trapped in that fan unit, right?
There's a condensation unit, so the condensed water runs out and drains out.
Outside the plants.
Yes. What we've also done is we install these, this is what we did at Butler and Creedmore, these large units that all they do is remove humidity, they don't cool the air, they introduce outside fresh air that's been dehumidified, so that helps bring that dew point down as well. So, uh, the next slide, this is phase three, the next two big schools that we have to, have to hit are South Bramble and Webb. We've been, we've been fixing these fan coil units, but the problem is there's no fresh air in those buildings. We're either heating or cooling the same old stale air, and the outside of the school, where the building overhangs, the soffit is the underpart, the hot air in the, in the summer can literally come up and then go in above these drop ceilings. So if, we're trying to cool down the air here to like seventy-two degrees, and above those ceiling tiles, it's like a hundred-and-sixty, and it's humid air from outside, so it creates this thunderstorm effect, and that's why we're getting all this mold. So we have to seal those buildings and install the dehumidification units, and the estimated cost of that is about four-point-five million. I'm, I am worried because we might not have enough money to put new air conditioning systems in both of the gyms, which we desperately need. Dr. McLean, earlier this year, we had a volleyball situation. How hot does it get in those gyms?
A hundred degrees.
Yeah.
What would it cost to, to do the pump for those gyms?
Well, that, we're putting an alternate bid out, so we will get an accurate bid for those, but I'm, I'm just letting everyone know, I'm worried we're gonna run out of money. So this may be something that the board might wanna consider, variety of options to address that, because they, they desperately need air conditioning in those gyms.
I'm sorry, I'm not clear, alternate bidding to include new AC systems, what do you mean alternate bidding?
So we will put out for bid the job to upgrade each of those schools, and it won't include the air conditioner in the gym. We will have a separate increment that the companies can bid on that as well, in addition to their regular work. So I could, that way I know exactly how much that job will cost by itself, and we could use fund balance or go to the county or something like that to pay for those.
Uh, the rough estimate of four-point-eight include, uh, an estimate for the gyms?
No.
So it's separate and above?
That's why there'll be an alternate bid for that.
Okay.
They, and I talked to the engineers, one of the big problems right now is the, we don't, they're worried that even if we put this out for bid, which we will in February, that we're gonna get enough companies bidding on it, because construction industry is so hot right now. We, we might not have three good bids, or even two good bids, on this work.
What happens when that comes back and we don't reach that, do we have other alternatives to get bids?
Well, we'll work with, uh, Eva's colleague, Rod Malone, about that, but, um, I...
There's a process, if you don't get three bids, you put it out one more time, and if you still don't, then you go.
But if you don't have the money, we don't need to worry about it. I mean, I mean, just putting your eyes...
Right. So if you'll have the next slide there. Um, and then we got phase three, uh, which we, you know, this is South Bramble and JF Webb, so again, that, that second bullet just says, I hope, I hope we have enough money to get those AC units. All right, so there's our total that we've pretty much earmarked up to ten million, and we burned through nine-point-five easy, and I mean, I could probably go out and spend another three million tomorrow on just miscellaneous. So, you know, bit, we have burned through that fifteen million dollars very quickly, as we thought we would, as we thought we would, but we've made a tremendous amount of progress too, tremendous amount of progress. These are some slides from the engineer. Um, again, I, I only put these up here because, for you to refer to and read, the issue is humidity, it's humidity, okay? It's not the, our ability to cool things, it's reducing the moisture in the air. And our engineers have also prioritized this work, you know, we obviously hit Butler and Creedmore because those were the worst, and then we've gone around everywhere and tried to do maintenance and the control systems, and then Webb and South Bramble are our next big ones. The next two after that are probably Stovall and Toller.
Why would we spend money on Toller?
Well, that's, I, that's, I'm just saying, those would be the next two schools that would need the most work. Uh, I'll give it the next slide, um, I'll scroll out already. Um, so where does all this leave us, okay? All schools have aging HVAC systems that require ongoing maintenance, replacement needs. At some point, major portions of these systems will require replacement, piping, chillers, boilers, controls, and air handling units. So, um, next slide. This is just a summary, you can see that the first column is our obligations to date, this is the planned estimates which are coming, this is on the heels of what we've already just spent. That first column is, is basically checks we've written. The second column is what we know we're gonna have to pay, and then that last column is our balance for each of these phases. So we have HVAC about maybe quarter million left out of the ten, and maybe half a million for the roofing. Next. So, um, I just wanted to also let everyone know, we're continuing with our air quality testing, that'll, uh, be taking place again in the spring, when we switch over to air conditioning, we'll be testing all schools, all of them, random air samples. Security continues, um, our entryway systems, perimeter fencing and gates, that work continues. We have our security cameras under contract, that was almost three-hundred-thousand dollars, they'll be starting that work this spring. We hope to have every single school have its own, uh, security camera system. School beautification, this has been a big priority, we've spent a lot of money working on painting over the past year, we're working on improving our landscaping, um, our parking lots, I'm very worried about the long-term health of our parking lots, okay? We have not done much at all in that respect, and, you know, we have slots that need probably complete replacement, we have some that need to be sealed, just so they'll last longer, um, cold weather just wreaks havoc with them. We need, our playgrounds need attention, um, et cetera. Just to let you know, thi- this is aside from our ongoing maintenance of just fixing things that are broken, we have done six thousand-plus work orders in the past year. And that's one-point-five million square feet of space, we have nine maintenance staff, nine guys, and we've had some health problems with some of our guys this year, some of them are getting older, okay? You know, it's like the aging and the graying of America, our workforce, those skilled technicians, there're not as many of them there anymore, and so I'm worried about, um, the long-term of that. Um, and then also want to let everybody know, we're moving forward with the new traffic pattern at Stovall Shaw Elementary School. We have an engineer, and we're gonna be meeting them out there tomorrow, uh, no, Thurs-, this, this week, Thursday, with the principal, and we have some preliminary drawings and plans to, to address that. So what do we do beyond the fifteen million? I, I, I just kind of, tonight serves as a, a little bit of a heads up on that, we need to think about what's gonna happen, I know that we talked about it in the liaison meeting, um, we're still gonna have some critical need after that amount. Um, and safety and security systems, we're gonna need to look at the next generation of what we're gonna do. Now, we're, we're finally kind of getting caught up with safety and security with Dr. McLean, you know, making that a priority, but there's a whole other level that we could be doing with that. And right now, I'm working with folks in operations to create that five-year facility needs plan, because we didn't really have a strong one before, and it's, it's, I basically would throw it out the window with all this work we've done, so I, I will be, you know, having that draft ready soon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you?
I have one question on the Stovall traffic pattern. At the safety meeting was the first time I heard that we were looking at an engineer to go out to do this. Looking at the diagram we had, do we actually need an engineer? Is there... Is there not anyone in our transportation that can go out, look at this, and decide which would be the best pattern for cars to come in or the buses to leave? Or is it something engineers are doing that we can't do because of the legality?
No, it's not necessarily legality. I think, so the company that we hired, they specialize in, they've done a lot of work with schools, so they, most of their work has to do with schools. And they design parking lots and traffic flow for schools. We probably could maybe get by with trying to put something together. I don't, I mean, our staff are so stretched, so thin already, I don't know how they would, you know, find time or resources to go out and measure and plan and set all that in place. We're gonna need to do some repaving, we're gonna need to do some curbs, there'll be a lot of painting that needs to happen out there. There might even need to be a little bit of work with the way water sheds. So we need to get a survey, we're gonna hire a surveyor to come in and survey everything, and get the engineer to really give us guidance on this. I, in my judgment, I don't think it would be viable for us trying to do it on our own. It's a pretty big project.
I know in the beginning with the IPSEC study, they didn't make a big deal out of this until I said we needed to do a traffic impact study there, because I saw things that they were not looking at.
Yep.
But as far as the traffic patterns and things, that wouldn't take brain scientists to figure out. I mean, I looked at that diagram, and it's pretty simple, but I was not familiar enough with the, whether we had to have turn lanes in the highway with DOT and other things we're looking at, so I was wondering if we needed an engineer for all of that? Since we're trying to save money, I was just wondering if someone in transportation could go out and look at it and-
Transportation and DOT?
No.
Or our people?
Our transportation, yeah. They could go out and kinda look at it and say, this is the best route for buses-
Right.
This is the best route for drop-offs and pickups with cars.
Well, I mean, I know certainly, I know Harry's, I value his opinion a lot on this, and I know that we've talked about the drawing that you're referring to, but there's gonna need to be some paving that's gonna have to be done, some concrete curbs that are gonna have to be set, poured, some of those steel pillars that prevent traffic from, you know, crashing through. There's, you know, it's just a lot of work, Mr. Yudi, but I'm willing, if, you know, if that's the direction the board would like us to take.
Well, I was just trying to get an understanding of why we needed an engineer just to do that, but you've explained other things they're looking at, you know, like the water shed, which I'm dealing with at my own property.
Yeah.
It's a paint. So, but that was my question, is what else are the engineers gonna do other than just look at the traffic pattern, because I feel like we could've done just that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Men?
Yes, Dr. Winborn, perhaps it's included, I just need to be clear. I didn't, well, I want to know about any interim fixes that have had to take place at schools, and if they are part of the 15 million thus far.
Any expenses related to HVAC and/or roofing are included in these figures.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I'd like to know if there have been any major maintenance issues taking place at any of our schools, other than what was on the list of critical, urgent, and very important.
So, and not, so everything that's roofing or HVAC is included in those statistics, but other than that, we have, we have spent a lot of money on-
Don't just say that. You need to say, because my next question is, where, what's the source?
Well, so, yeah, so all, and I, we keep spreadsheets of everything that we do, so I'd be happy to provide details by school of all the expenses that we've got and that we've spent over the past year, and all that comes from capital outlay fund.
But, I mean, so what are we, what are we talking? Give me a ballpark figure. We're talking a million, 2 million, 5 million?
Well, we've almost exhausted this year's budget. I mean, Len Henderson and I met with Beth Day last week to kinda see where we were, and so the ballpark million dollars that we gave for capital outlay, we've just about burned through all of that. It's pretty much accounted for. And we use that on things other than roofing or HVAC. Does that kinda help?
Oh, certainly. It explains that this has typically been the case. You've had to use funds to take care of the things that are happening right now, and that's why we don't really have a growing fund balance. Okay.
But I'm happy to provide detailed spreadsheets with every project-
That's something if the committees are approved, maybe that's something that the committee-
Well, that's gonna be asked, as a matter of fact, if we have a treaty. I've talked to Dr. McLean about that. Would like to see-
You'll have it.
Not only those things that are outside, but I'd like to see the balance of the 26 million urgent, critical, and need to be done. One of those things that we still have yet to do.
Well, and that's where the five-year plan is gonna come into play. And really, since we've had a chance to get really into all these projects and see how much worse they were than we thought they were gonna be, that five-year plan's gonna show you year by year what do we need to do.
And I appreciate that, Dr. Winborn and Boyd, but a five-year plan really doesn't scratch my itch when we're talking critical and urgent.
Yes, sir.
May be nice to do, if it's critical and urgent, it's not five years, or three years, or two years, so.
Okay, first year of that five-year plan's gonna be big.
Yes, sir. Mr. Yudi? Dr. McLean, when are we scheduled to receive that extra 11 million from the county? Because they said 26, they've only given us 15. Do you have any idea when we're supposed to receive that kind of 15 million? They said 15. They really only addressed 15 for the roofs and HVAC. So we asked for 26, and only got 15. It was my understanding they've only given us 15 right now.
They only obligated us to give 15.
Yes, ma'am.
The 15 was in two portions, but, I mean, the county has made it clear that we have access to the whole 15. But I don't know if that's what you're remembering, but there was a, they fronted a certain amount of the 15 and the rest of it. But they said, you know, clearly that we had access to the whole 15.
And it could've been, I was thinking that it was 15 and then the extra amount was gonna come.
I think that was-
But they split the 15 into two different portions, and I was thinking they split the 26 into two. So I guess we need to go back and ask for 11 million.
Yes, we do.
Yes, can we ask for more? Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Winborn, anything else, sir?
No, just the next item if you're ready. Our next item is our standing field trip approval roster, and we have a couple of just down on the bottom there. That's okay. So we have one additional, one additional trip, and that is Bramble Academy going to Washington DC. So just as a reminder, this, this, this is an ongoing list, so it's cumulative, so it shows all of the field trips that have been approved since the beginning of this academic year. And so the last column is approval, yes or no, and so the last row is, has not yet been approved, that's Bramble Academy, their field trip to Washington DC. And these are overnight or and/or out of state.
This is an action item, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Action to approve the-
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Allohs in favor, say aye. Allohs opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item?
Attendance lines. So board members, tonight I have in the audience Mr. Harry Wilkins and Ms. Cindy Fain. I'd like to first just thank them publicly for all the very difficult work they have done to bring these events to you tonight. Ms. Fain in particular has spent a lot of hours working on this, and it's fortunate because she just recently got, she received special training on how to use this advanced software so she could run these comparisons and analyses. So tonight we're bringing to you three options, okay? And I'd like to start out just by showing you the current boundaries so you can get an idea of what that looks like.
Mr. Winborn, if I could jump in just a minute, there is a lot of good stuff here and a lot of conversation about what to do. If we don't, aren't ready to make a decision on this tonight, I don't want anybody to feel pressured. Let's do it the way we think is the best way, because this is a critical, critical decision that we'll be making. Yes?
When I looked at this, it was kinda confusing having to go back and forth, and I was gonna ask tonight, is there any way that you could get or create an overlay where we can just look at the layers as they go down across to see the differences, instead of trying to jump back and forth on the-
You can overlay it, it'd be difficult to see, but I could pull off the names to clear it up a little bit, and you could see the overlay.
Let me ask you a different way, jump in there too. Could you just take a map of the county and the attendance lines and with no roads or anything on it, just so that we can see-
Yeah, that's what I was saying, take that off, take all that off.
Then it would give us an idea a little bit, because it isn't really about, anyway, that, would that help?
I think so, because the problem I was having was going back, and I don't have a way to print it, so going back and trying to figure out, well, where was this line at before? And if I had like an overlay where I could just pull down and see the difference, and then maybe compare another one to it.
Otherwise, what she's talking about is she can make a beautiful overlay, right? Not actually a piece of clear plastic.
Right, right.
Right. If you'll allow me to try to walk through this, and it might shed a little light. This is our current northern area elementary school attendance zone, it's current, the four schools that we currently have. So green is Cradle. This darker blue is West Oxford, the light blue is Toller, and this is Stovall, okay? So when we started doing this, basically, we're looking at the light blue, Toller area joining another school, or schools' attendance zones. So you're gonna see three options. The first option basically just takes everybody that's at- takes everyone that is currently at Toller and moves them over to Stovall. That's all it does, just combines the two. So if you were in Toller's zone this year, next year you're gonna be in Stovall's, just combines them. That's option one, okay? Option two is essentially gonna do the same, but it's gonna impact West Oxford as well. Most of Toller is gonna go over to Stovall's, but West Oxford's gonna creep up just a little bit and grab some of the students that were in the Toller zone, okay? So West Oxford will share some of the load. So basically, everyone from Toller moves over to Stovall, and West Oxford comes up and grabs this little southwest area, I didn't hear.
And Stan, what, if you don't mind, I couldn't think this goes back to Mr. Yudi, too. How far in the, in the current attendance line for Toller Oak Hill, where would that be right now on what you got up there?
It runs right along through here.
So then show it again.
Right along through here. Basically, this, this little section, West Oxford comes up and grabs this area, okay? Just to kinda share the load. All right, the third option pretty much does the same thing, but it goes up a little bit further. So you see before where it was in here, this time it comes all the way up here. Now, there's another sheet that I'm gonna show you that has a chart with numbers, so you can see the, how this impacts as far as the number of students. But really, if you start looking at where these children live, and the distance from here to West Oxford versus the distance from here to Stovall, you start seeing a balance come into play. So, take a look at this sheet, it's called the analysis. And we have, this first page tells you kind of currently what's happening. The first row, at Toller right now, we have 209 children that currently attend, and that includes pre-K through 5. Okay, we're included because they ride our buses. 27 of those live outside of that attendance zone. Stovall Shaw, 365. 77 of those live outside the attendance zone. We're talking Mount Choice kids, right? West Oxford, there are 499. There are 75 who live outside the attendance zone. And we included Cradle, just so you could see Cradle as well, even though Cradle's not in the fashion by any of these three choices. There are 54 out of the attendance zone there. How many empty classrooms do we have at each school? In other words, how many could we reasonably take? Because we know the absolute maximum capacity based on DPI's charts, but again, I think I've said before, we kinda, we don't wanna go there, that would just be... So what's, when we look at actual empty classrooms, we have 11 at Stovall, we have 5, I put a star down here because we have two mobile units, but we're not gonna put kids in mobile units, right? I didn't count them. And then West Oxford, oh, excuse me, 11 and 5, and Cradle right now has 6 empty classrooms. That's just FYI though, that last column. So what's the maximum additional recommended enrollment that each of these schools could handle? Well, the maximum the state will even allow is 20 in an elementary classroom, so that's 220 more kids, 100 kids. So what's the approximate total recommended capacity? So we really don't wanna go above 565 at Stovall, and we don't wanna go above 600 at West Oxford. At that point, it's just starting to get too crowded. And then this last is just to let you know about the pre-K. So with those numbers in mind, how do these options look? So option number one, if we went with that, Stovall would go from, would go up to 474. West Oxford, there'd be no change, and just some no's. There would be no disruption in West Oxford. There might be a little bit longer routes, because you're talking about that whole area that they'd have to travel across county to get over to Stovall. Now, so that's, that takes Stovall up to 474. What do we say the recommended maximum there was? 565. So we're still within, within that possibility. So I mean, Stovall could handle everybody, right? They could. But is that the best thing to do? They have the space, let's put it that way, okay? Look at option two. Option two is that one where West Oxford starts to go up and grab a couple of kids. Well, instead of 474, it would take it down a little bit to 451. West Oxford would then have about 530. What was their maximum recommended capacity? 600, so we're still okay there, all right? What are the notes? Well, you start to share that Toller enrollment with West Oxford. There's some kind of irregularity in the attendance zones that Harry and Cindy noted. There's some arbitrary, like, there's a little finger that kinda sticks up in this one road, kind of a little strange. And, but again, you're starting to maybe look at shorter drive times. Option three is West Oxford going up even further, would take that down to 445 at Stovall, again, well within what they can handle, and it would take West Oxford up to 536. Still 75 kids short of what they can handle. Still 75 kids short of what they can handle. Clearer attendance lines. Again, you share the burden between the two schools and possibly more efficient routes.
Stan?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it didn't mean.
Well, let me finish and might help answer your question. Now, something to note about this, these are projections based on current children, where they live now. It also, it checks K4. So when Cindy did this analysis, she said, who lives in these new drawings? That are currently in kindergarten through fourth grade? Because the fifth graders are going to middle school. And then we added a projection of kindergarten based on our averages, average kindergarten enrollments over the past few years. These numbers do not include choice. We have no way of anticipating how that's going to work out. There could be a lot of kids that move one way or another. There could be kids from the southern area that want to come to the north. So this is strictly of where your house address is, okay? This does not factor in choice. And really, what we're trying to do is figure out where's the best balance and where can we handle that capacity? Just as a note, Cradle, they have another 120 additional students that they could handle. So these are the three recommendations. We've talked a lot about this, Harry and Cindy, they've driven all out of these areas and looked at them. They've spent a lot of time thinking about this. They've looked at where the routes might possibly be. After a lot of discussion, our recommendation would be that we go with option three.
So my question, Stan, is since all three options can work within the capacity? And we're probably going to have less than that because I guess we know that Oxford Prep's going to K through five now. And we talk in the process, I talked to prior to the decision, we're anticipating dropping down. These numbers will be lower than this based on the charter laws. But on all those three options? Have we looked at, and I'm sure you all have, but have we looked at, are there neighborhood concentrations where we, we keep children together in the same school that, you know, maybe would be playmates and all that? As long as if there's, there's 30 houses right here, you know, do we make the attendance zone so they all go to West Oxford or Stovall rather than say run right through there just for the sake of a road or something? Or are we considering trying to keep neighborhoods together?
Well, let me start. Harry, you jump in. The density of folks in this area is very light. So there really are not a lot of concentrations. If you look at the difference between option two and three, we're really only talking about six children. Difference. And, and that's grabbing almost two or three square miles, you know, of additional space. So, you know, you have to grab, you have to get a lot of land in order to get, to get students.
So there's no, we don't want, I mean, we just don't want to...
Well, Harry, did you want to throw that?
Based on what we've seen outriding in the, I'm going to do it, go ahead. I'm going to go ahead and call road names, Sunset Road, Saddle White Road, that appears to be the area that is impacted by the redrawn and the boundary. Now, we wrote those today specifically to answer this question. We wanted to see, did we have pockets of, of communities or housing areas that this would highly affect? And from what we saw based on option two and option three, there are basically no areas where there's multiple housing. I mean, you go miles between houses. And so with that being said...
Houses with children? Houses with elderly age kids, yeah.
And, you know, with that being said, I don't think we're going to impact a lot of those children that have grown up in, you know, in communities with each other. And that was one of our reasons for actually going out and riding this area today was to be able to see, do we have a family drive that may have 10 units or 10, you know, houses in it with elementary students? And we just did not see that.
Is there any way that we could, in terms of the choice program? That the kids who may be affected by the attendance line changes could be first in line to choose if they want to go to a different school?
Look, Mr. Chair, I was saying, when he said choice, then we do like the charter schools. We have a lottery.
Or some kind of way?
Absolutely. That's exactly what they do.
But it's only necessary. It may not be necessary.
It might not be necessary, but if it were, then we have a lottery. So?
I guess the point is, could you all look at, the administration look at some possible ways to try to make everybody as happy as they can be?
Absolutely. And my comments tonight on the series. This is a choice district for all intensive purposes. There are only a couple of schools that are not choice options. And before I lose a student to charter or private, where parents just get happy, people are with them.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Concerning all, all options really. It has to do with the, the amount of time, the distance of time students have to ride, regardless of where they go. I mean, you should have some idea how long, the longest route will be for a child, wherever they live to Toller. I mean, at Stovall or West Oxford. Do you have any?
I can answer that if you want me to. Well, when we do the routes, it's going to depend on how many students we have that actually want to ride. And we don't ever know that until late summer when we get those numbers in. I can't do anything as far as starting our routes until the closing of Power School when they get the grades in and the students are moving on. And so it's going to be a little while before we know those actual, you know, what the routes are going to look like.
Well, I understand that part.
It could be like an hour long.
My question is, do you know a child live on Sam Road in such and such a place? And if they go from that there to Stovall Shaw from the Toller community?
It would depend on how many students would be picked up on the way. You know, we, we may have, you may have a full bus, you know, with 35, 45 kids on it. And that's going to really change that route. But we do our best to try to keep those routes under an hour. We've got some buses now that, that we can't put many kids on it because the bus route is so long. But we just, we do the best we can to try to, you know, to accommodate that so the students don't have to ride the bus that long.
So the route doesn't necessarily have to do with where the, where the child live to the school, but I mean, they pick up on the way?
Because of the roads they have to travel?
Right.
So you don't know which direction of travel you're going to have until you know where the students are actually located on that route. You know, a prime example, we had a student live at Tola Oak Hill back in the days of the Magnet School. His bus ride from the Oak Hill Road to Butner Stem was almost two hours. Well, if you stop and think, if you just drive from Oak Hill to Butner, you're looking at a 35 or 40 minute ride. Because it's really going to depend on where these students are located. Now, and we have discussed this. With the Stovall and Toller boundaries joined at some point? Looking at bus capacities in Stovall? It may be that some of these Stovall buses will go into what is currently now the Toller area because they have empty seats on the bus and able to pick up some of those students. Which may free up additional buses that we're currently using at Toller to build different routes to cover different areas than they're covering right now. Our number one priority in what comes to transportation and the changes like this is going to keep ride times as little as possible. If we have to identify buses that we have to merge and to free up a bus to shorten those, that's our plan. We don't want to put a child on the bus that lives up at the, you know, the very northern part of the county, transport them to Stovall and they won't be on the bus two hours. That's not what we're, you know, going to do. We want to make the ride times as, as short as possible. And we will do whatever we can within our routing and our colleagues in Raleigh, you know, suggest us to do. But as far as being able to tell you now, if a child lives on Shepherd Ross Road, okay, they're going to be on the bus one hour. I couldn't really tell you because I don't know where the kid's going to be picked up before that child gets on? And where we're going after he gets on at the present time.
And so what we like to do is like on those long routes, we go to the farthest side, to the farthest student. And we pick up that student and then, you know, pick them up as they come in. But rest assured, I will, I will try my very best to make sure the students aren't riding very long at all.
So we're being asked to make decisions on these options, not knowing all the information that I'm asking for.
I mean, basically... I don't know if it would be possible to give that to you until really we know, prior to the start of the school year, where the kids, where the kids, who wants to ride with us, first of all?
Right.
And where they live.
Because last year we sent out a survey at the very, it was springtime, asking all these students, you know, you know, are you going to be riding next year? We had a lot of fluctuation. I mean, it was, we've had, I mean, they're unstable. You know, some people ride this week and then go decide not to ride. I mean, it's just up and down all the time. So it's just really hard to know.
So in this hypothetical world that we're talking about? You mean to tell me we can't sit down and do a guesstimation? Of what do we take regardless of all three options that you have? You can't give a pretty similar guess of how far it would take in those three options? What would it take for the father's student in that new district zone to go to Stovall Shaw? Or to come to West Oxford? Knowing the three zones, do you want us to vote for? You can't sit down and do some type of projection of how long it would possibly take for each bus to be on the route with the students that you know that we already have?
The only projection we could give you at the present time would be to look at the Toller routes currently that are coming from the Person County line and going to Toller? And estimate the length of time it would take to go from Toller over to Stovall? You know, so that, you know, but then there again, we're only estimating.
This year's.
That's right.
But that's better than no.
Yeah, I was going to say that is, that would at least give us some information, understanding that it may not be accurate, you know, next year.
I mean, we can tell you basically.
Yeah, so I would just say, just, just to tell you this. Option three, because West Oxford is going to be grabbing those students that are north and west? That's a shorter distance to West Oxford than it would be to go to Toller. So that in and of itself is a very general estimate.
To go to Stovall.
To go to Stovall, sorry, thank you. So I mean, that in and of itself is a very rough estimate. I mean, common sense dictates that, you know, if you go further north and grab those students, that distance is shorter to West Oxford than it would be to Stovall.
Well, see, that's what I was wondering, why we couldn't get some kind of estimate. And probably since it dictates that, surely we should have some type of idea with the bus route and route. Because you're talking to satisfy a whole lot of parents, a whole lot of students, to make them feel comfortable with what we chose to do as a board. At least at how, at least they'll have some idea of how long their child is going to be on the bus. I, I would concur with that because I would think when a parent is making a decision as to which school I'm going to enroll my child in, they would want to have an idea.
We currently don't offer door-to-door service for choice though.
See, good, that's a word there you go.
And, and so if, if you live in the attendance zone of say, West Oxford right now? I know, for example, in the Horiah community where I live, and my children rode the bus? It was very different from year to year, but the pickup time and the drop off time would be depending on how many kids rode the bus. So, you know, sometimes it would be 6:45 in the morning, sometimes it would be seven. You know, it just, it varies. So I don't, I don't know what to say. I, I don't know that it's possible for us to give you all the level of detail that you're asking. When it comes to choice too? As I said, we don't offer door-to-door service. We, we can offer shuttles. And what the board could also do is agree to make these soft lines. So that you would give Harry and Cindy the authority to maybe, if there were children that lived near that attendance zone? That they would have the authority to change the bus route, to go up and above it. You know, to make it more convenient where the parent wanted to go to that school. It's going to reduce the overall efficiency of the bus transportation system, which impacts our funding. So that's just something else to keep in mind.
I, I understand the choice provision that you put in there. My more concern is toward the ones who don't choose choice, ones that would be locked into their zone. That's going to go to one of those two schools. We should be given some type of, of estimation of the time that a bus ride would be.
We can go back, look at this year's routes, add the driving time from Toller to Stovall or from Stovall back towards the dependent factor and give an estimate, but understand, this is an estimate, estimate only.
Sure, I think everybody had a word for that.
And reflect in no way what conditions could be next year. I mean, it's too broad a window.
Well, just give us some information. We may not be completely accurate and it may change, but we need something to take a look at that would give us a rough idea of length.
And, and my, my real concern is when a parent asks the question that I've asked. Well, you tell them, I mean, you know, parents want to know where, they know where they live, they know, they're trying to decide whether they want to go to the schools they want to go to. Now, you can tell them how far it is from where they live to Stovall Shaw based on what you are recommending. And choice don't have anything to do with that part of it. And that's what I'm talking about.
Well, what I can do is I can formulate a bogus route? And look at the students that would be on the route from the farthest distance to the school. And I will put that bus at capacity. So we know that, you know, but it's still going to be, you know, it's not going to be, it's going to be a hypothetical. But we can see what kind of that is.
Where's the one that capacity issue of why you put that capacity?
Sorry?
If it wasn't that capacity issue?
Well, that's because I'm talking about two schools and we're talking about a completely different route pattern.
And, and if you don't want to, I don't think you want to go from, say, the Person County line to Toller and then to Stovall because your bus route would not necessarily do that.
Oh, no, it wouldn't.
So you want to make a hypothetical based on the students that might be...
Toller would not be in it.
The western part, near, near Person, maybe up near Virginia border, somewhere in there? Figure out what the most efficient bus route, most students to get to, to get to Stovall Shaw? And, and see what the time would be?
Yeah.
And it's Virgil Line to Stovall Shaw from the
And see, what, what changes sometimes is that you may have a pocket, you know, a place up here that the bus will go all the way up here and pick up all these students and bypass all these roads down here. And so that, that can happen when we're doing these routes. Does that make sense? It's like you have your other pair in the top.
You, I, let's just, I mean, give us, give us some estimated. I think all of us sitting here agree that that, that information is necessary. Is anybody, board members, do you want to object to them doing this?
I just say with the caveat is, I agree with them. It's going to be very hard not knowing. Like, my children rode the bus before we moved in. And each year, like Dr. Wimmer said, it changed based on who got picked up? And, and whether they, one time they inverted the route. The kids got picked up at the very end and it was a short bus ride. The next year they got picked up first and it was a, all over town. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough.
But we got to have something. You know, it's, it's going to be tough, but we need to have something. And I think the board is in general consensus that, that we ask you to do that and come back in March.
This is for the students in the Toller district. Were we looking at Toller and Stovall? Because see, these routes next year could affect both schools. You know, because what we're doing, what we're doing currently at Toller? Once the two schools merge, those routes could change drastically. Because that bus that's going to pick up here at Virgil Lima? Instead of it coming down towards Toller, it may go from Virgil Lima across the northern part of the county now, picking up both Toller and Stovall.
And then coming in 15, which would be coming in quicker.
That's the kind of information we need.
Right.
Right, right.
May I suggest, Dr. McPhee, that you, you get with your folks and work out, I think you heard what we said?
Yes.
And what the board wants and, and then you figure out how to do that and come back.
We will add this to the agenda in March. It is time to do that.
Thank you. One other quick question. This year, the furthest route to West Oxford from
This year, the furthest route to West Oxford from Person County line, same, say, from Berea to West Oxford, can you just toss in some, so we have some comparison? Like, if we're, if we're having, you know, 55-minute or 50-minute or hour and 15-minute rides right now with the current situation to West Oxford and to Tola-
Bus 254.
Oh, you already know it.
Bus 254 leaves, the bus driver leaves at approximately 5:40 in the morning. She travels up 158. Her first stop is either, I think, on Hopgood Road, on the Buckner side of 158. That's where she starts. Now, they were, they want the students at school approximately 7 o'clock to be able to get breakfast, so this bus route is about an hour long with students.
That's going to West Oxford.
That goes to West Oxford.
And so that's the longest bus route we have right now?
That goes towards the Person County line to West Oxford, yes. Now, special needs is, now, we have another bus special needs, but it does not transport but just a few, you know, those particular students.
Mr. Smith?
There's one short question. What is the longest bus route that we have, period?
We're looking at approximately 2 hours and 47 minutes in the morning and close to that in the afternoon, and it's early college.
Now, that's not the time for an individual student, that's the overall time-
That's the route.
Well, how about for the student? How, how, what's the longest a student is riding?
Probably from here to the first student's house, I would say it'd be about 30 minutes. Because the first student is probably up off of the-
Now, how long, how long is the student on the bus?
Approximately 2 hours.
The student to go to early college, of course, early college is a choice and it's, you know, down the southern part of the county, so it's- And we do have some that live up near Virginia.
Wow. Wow.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We'll bring this back in March.
Thank you very much.
When do you need to say to the parents, do we need March, do we need it March, do we need it now?
We need to make sure you have good information.
Yeah, I can make it, yeah.
So tonight will not be the night, but March will be-
We should play and try to make it in March.
If we can, yes.
Okay, moving along, you all received the, the proposed committees that your chair is, is recommending. I asked if anybody had any problems with these assignments, let me know. I have not heard from anybody, to the contrary. So I would like to ask for a motion to approve these committees as recommended.
And they are?
They are, yeah. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
I move it to recommend.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Terms of office, is this correct? Terms of office for board members. Ms. Dubison?
Absolutely. So, board members asked me to investigate what it would take to move from six-year terms to four-year terms. And I sent you a memo, which I'm sure you've read, so I will not recap the whole thing. But the short summary is that most, most school boards in North Carolina do have four-year terms. I found two that still have six, but there has definitely been a trend towards converging on the four-year terms. There is a state statute that establishes four-year terms for boards of education, but so many, that's the default unless you have local legislation, which many do. As we have discussed, your six-year terms are enshrined in local legislation going all the way back to, to the early 60s, if not before, that's as far back as that went. But when the voting rights lawsuit happened in the late 80s, it was enshrined in the court's order resolving that lawsuit. The lawsuit was not about term length, it wasn't an issue, but in the order, it preserved the, the six-year terms, and it specifically says that the board shall have six-year terms. So I think that if the board were interested, the steps would be, one, that we would seek to amend that order. I, I cannot, I, I can't anticipate any objections to that because the voting rights issue was not related to term length. It shouldn't affect minority representation in any way. I did some initial investigation to see if I could sort of figure out how difficult it would be. The lawsuit was filed by the U.S. Department of Justice, represented by the U.S. Attorney's Office locally. I contacted the U.S. Attorney's Office, they said, it's not really their deal, you have to go to the Department of Justice in D.C., the Civil Rights Division. They were shut down for most of the past several weeks. I did, through Facebook, contacted the wife of a friend at the Department of Justice, and she said she would look into it, but she was shut down. I mean, she was at home, too, they weren't working. And now, I think they have a bit of a backlog. So I have not specifically been able to find out who would give us consent. But assuming we could identify that person or division who would file a motion in the Eastern District, I believe it was Judge Boyle then, Judge Boyle is still there, and just ask that that portion be removed from the order altogether, that the order not addressed that. The second step, which could be started simultaneously, would be for the board to raise the issue with your representatives and ask for their sign-on to propose local legislation, assuming that the court, you know, once we got court consent. The third issue would be what that legislation says, and that's addressed in the second half of my memo, sort of, how would you do this? I don't know that you have to figure that out right away, I think, because the first two steps are going to take a while. But, so those are the steps that I see. And so if you were interested in taking action, I mean, another thing you can do is seek further public input or study the issue in some other way. But if you are interested in taking action, I think the first steps would be to send me to seek modification of the court order. And I think rather than ask that something specific be in it, I would just ask that the six-year part be removed so that it doesn't address it one way or the other. It doesn't require you to then take step two, but then step two would be getting the sign-on of your local legislators. At least to be concept, yes.
So saying that it would take a little while, I believe we have seats coming up for election next year. Is this gonna be able to be put into place in time for that, to follow the rest of that?
So, it's February now, they come up, are you in May or November? I should know this.
May.
Actually, this coming year, it's March.
Oh, May 2020, not 19.
2020.
Yeah. March 20, I think the primary-
It was back in February, March and May.
I think it's in March, though.
I think it's in March because it's a presidential election year, which means-
I think it's possible, yes. I think, I mean, part of it is the legislative session next year.
It's not until, or they'll come in right after the first of the year. No, I'm sorry, they won't come in, they'll come in roughly to do the budget in April, May.
It's a short session.
It's a short session, so it would have to be during the 19, 18, 19 session.
We wanna get it done this time.
Which would be, I think it's possible. I guess the difficult thing is, you might have to get the legislation passed, yeah, first and just say, you know, pending court approval or something like that, or upon approval by the U.S. District Court because of the legislature. Otherwise, the legislature won't be in session when you need them.
Well, it was originally about the Department of Justice, the Civil Rights Department.
Right.
Other Department of Justice. Because I was, I was involved in that, in the actual review before, probably an hour about, you know, why we needed to do it, being asked. So I would assume that we have to, not necessarily start, but then we do have to get their-
Well, that's right. I mean, we could go into court and just ask for it to be modified, but the first thing the judge is gonna ask is, does the federal government have any objections? So it would just go faster if I could get the federal government to say upfront that they don't, which would be my goal.
Mr. Smith? Yes, and, and while I understand how important this is, one of the questions that I would like to know is, Attorney Dubison, since this, in my estimation, is not typical Board of Education business, would there be additional charges from your firm to pursue the work associated with pursuing this?
Well, yes, like any work I do, it would be at our hourly rate.
Then, is there any way to give us an estimate as to what this will cost? We're looking at, we're saving pennies, so we need to know the impact this could have on us. I would think the Budget and Finance Committee would, would love to know. I mean, it's gonna cost, it'll be a bill we have to pay.
I can try to work that up for you. I mean, I don't anticipate it being, you know, it's not like the cost of a lawsuit because, assuming that it wouldn't be contested, and if the federal government said they had a problem with it, I would come back to you, I wouldn't proceed without. But an uncontested motion, I don't know that the court would wanna hear arguments.
Well, I don't know about what work is involved in this, but I would like to have some sense of, you know, it's gonna cost us $500, it's gonna cost us $2,500, $5,000, or whatever the cost is gonna be. The merit of it notwithstanding, just how much it's gonna cost.
So you'll get something together?
I'll do my best. It's, it's not something that, I don't know that we have a precedent for.
Well, and that's one of the reasons for asking the questions, it's not difficult.
Mr. Dubison?
I was gonna suggest that we offer a motion that she proceed with, seeing if we can get the courts and Department of Justice to relax your promise in six years before you mentioned your comment. So is there a way, your hourly rate and estimate of, assuming uncontested, and let's just, let's just be optimistic. Uncontested, if you're saying 10 hours, then-
I mean, I would say 2,000 to 5,000. One variable is whether the judge wants us to come in and talk about it or whether he would just rule on it. And that's 2,000 to 5,000 over some number of months.
You had known for a second. So I was watching Red Rainbow when this was going on, so explain to me what the merit of making this change is, somebody, I just don't know. I'm confused about it.
I'll take it. Or six-year term, like it, on the board.
The, the, the problem is, we have had a number of elections uncontested. When I ran, I talked to a lot of people to maybe get them to run instead of me running. And everyone said, not for six years. Six years is a daunting amount of time for many people to commit, especially working people, and, you know, sure, Mr. Smith, I work, I think probably millions on this board work, and it's, it's a, it's a big, big commitment. I think we could get more people interested in running for the school board. And, and quite frankly, we really, I mean, my opinion is, we shouldn't be here. I mean, I'm 67, you need a 35-year-old in my place with two kids in the school system. I mean, that's, that's what we need. And what we're getting is, we're getting all older people because we more likely have the time to do it. If we're gonna let, you know, we're trying to encourage younger people, we've gotta, we can't have them initially go, I mean, six years scares people off. The fact that we're only one of two or three school boards that still is at a six-year, and, and the other thing, from a democratic point of view, let's say, unfortunately, we're all good people, but let's say someone got elected who just was not a good person, and, you know, in North Carolina, it's almost impossible to recall someone. So you cannot get rid of a bad person. And now you're stuck with them for six years instead of four years. And that extra two years could get really long. So, I mean, I think there are so many reasons to go to four years that I think if, if Ms. Dubison can say, you know, not to exceed 5,000, I'll let you know if it, if it looks like it is and we can re-change, but I would say we need to get her moving on it. You know, it'd be nice if we could have this in place by the next year's election so that, that we can start moving towards, you know, you know, looking at, making this more open to more people in our community. And I think, I think that's what I would like to propose, is that we know we have right now a guesstimate, we won't hold her to it, but two to five. If it's gonna be more than five, you stop everything and you let Dr. O'Leary know and word gets out, hey, she's already at five and she's, you know, not, and we cut our losses. If we, if we choose to, but I don't think it's gonna-
Cut our losses.
Well, the other-
But I don't think that's gonna happen.
The other thing that would affect that is if board members are prepared to do the approach of the legislators instead of-
Yeah, that, that, that would be, yeah, that would be a local thing that the board administers that.
And, and, well, it's here, you know, I, I sit on the School Boards Association Board of Directors, and I'm all over the state of North Carolina. Boards are pretty much the same as this one. You've got some old people on it, you've got the young people on it, you've got the kids in school and some, I, I mean, we, because we do six-year terms, then it by no means means that we are different as a result of that from the average school board in the state of North Carolina. You know, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with our law, whether we serve four or six-year terms, of course, but what you're saying is not gonna change. I mean, going to four-year terms, you're not gonna get the results you, you're gonna ask for.
Well, it was the, it was the, it was the thing that, that I was told, that, you know, six years is too long. And, and I've had a lot of community people tell me, six years is too long for a board member to serve without the community being able to, to, for instance, we, we're having to make some very difficult decisions, and they may not be popular with a lot of people in the community. Should they have a right more frequently to vote, to, to let us know what their votes, where they stand? We represent them. But six years is a long time, you know, for someone to choose to vote for me and then I don't do what they want them to do, or that they're stuck with me for six years. I just think it's, it's a more democratic situation to every four years have to go back to the people, back to your constituents and say, I would like to serve again. This is what I did, this is what I, decisions I made, do you want me to serve again? And let them choose.
I, I, you know, I, Rob, I think, you know, that's, that sounds really great. To me, the number one reason to move in this direction is, you said this, people don't wanna serve. Six years, it is daunting. I mean, six years sound, it's a long time. Does that, has that reflected in, you know, people not running and all that good stuff? Who knows? But it is hard to get folks to wanna run for six years, from my, from my perspective.
Right, see, and, and, you know, Mr. Smith, I mean, you've been unopposed, could be because, you know, you're a great candidate and nobody wants to run against you, but if you've been unopposed, you are unopposed, right?
Absolutely.
What, do we have another unopposed?
I was unopposed.
You are unopposed. And, and again, I'm glad you're on the board, and I'm glad you're on the board, Mr. Smith, but in a democracy, we don't want unopposed elections. We, we want, you know, we want-
Depends on whether or not you're running.
Do you have a motion?
So I would like- Who boards are we playing by the table?
Well, I understand, I understand. And the board can choose up or down. This is, this is kinda where we go for it or not. And I would move that the board authorize Attorney Dubison to investigate with the Justice Department and the courts to see if we can get the restriction on our, our terms to be removed, and that she will let us know if, as soon as she understands that the cost for doing this would exceed $5,000.
Would you, would, we have a second? We have a second, Ms. Judy? Would you re, re, okay, we need your, reread that, we need to reread that one. Reread? Please, one more.
Yeah. Motion to the Board of Education to authorize Attorney Dubison to investigate with the legislation system and the courts to remove the six-year Board of Education restrictions and to get back to the other students possible.
And to let us know if she will receive by help.
And to get back to you.
That's not the motion. So, Mr. Judy, you seconded that motion, or you-
I'll second it.
Okay, you'll second- Okay, you'll second the addition.
But that was what I originally said.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's why we're reading it back.
Just a point of clarification, does that authorize me to actually seek the change, assuming it's within the...
Yes.
The cost barriers, to actually file a motion and ask the court to do that?
It is within the cost barrier, I don't think that...
Why don't I, why don't I try and rephrase a little bit, and see if this fits what you're saying? That authorize the board attorney to seek to amend the court order to remove the restriction on term length, on the condition that it stay within that cost of $5,000? Is that accurate?
Yes, I mean, if it's only going to cost $1,200 in the courts, yes, you can do it. We still have to get the legislation, but if we can't get the court, we can't do it.
Okay, so now, we got that motion, that is acceptable to use. So the other one's off the table, and is there a second to this motion? We have a second? All right, further discussion?
I do have readiness. Mr. Rivers, will this be with the proviso that this is resolved during this legislative session?
Yeah.
I would say, court-wise, I cannot guarantee that. You can file a motion in federal court and have it ruled on in 30 days or six months. And they need, give you no reason for their delay.
Well, we, we would have to talk to our legislators and Congress committee.
Well, yes, but moving forward with your local legislators, yeah.
We can certainly let them know that we are in process, and that we're anticipating a possibility.
And if you can get them to say they would support and introduce a bill, I can add that into the motion, that, you know, everybody's ready.
But I understand what if, what if, what if. The point is, are we talking about having this complete at the end of this legislative session, or is this something that can spill over to the next short session of what happened?
It would be, it would be my hope that we could have it ready for the next election, but if not, the next election after that, I mean, I think it's important that we, yeah, that we get it done.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So we got two opposed. All right. I'm just trying to count what's five, so it's five, two. Okay? All right, so you'll go first. All right, your amendment.
Absolutely. Ms. Day, will you bring us our amendments at my place?
Good morning, board members. Tonight, we have budget amendments for several funds. The first one being the state fund. This is an increase to the state budget, is budgeting additional transportation funds that, that coming in mid-year, 168,000, and some textbook funds, and then also an adjustment within the exceptional children's department budget. So it is an increase to the total state fund budget of 171,000. The second budget amendment is the local, local budget amendment, and this is within the local budget, it is adjustments within the CTE, or Career Technical Education, Exceptional Children's Program, and Human Resources budgets. The third budget amendment is the other restricted fund budget, and this is budgeting some recycling revenue received, so it's an increase to the budget of $1,300. The final budget amendment that you have this evening is for the Capital Outlay Fund, and this is budgeting state funds for the DPI, and stopgap bus replacements, that we'll talk about in, in a few minutes. This is the payments that would be made by the state, 311,469, and then an adjustment within the facility budget.
Thank you. This is for action this evening.
So, we have a second? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Day, will you share a financial update, your travel, please?
The financial update is as of December 31, 2018. At that point, we're 50% through our fiscal year. The percentages are in line, and our expenditures are within budget. The next document you have is the Board Travel. Again, this is as of December 31, 2018. The total budget is 10,624 as of December 31. $4,671.33 have been spent, and so the remaining balance is $5,952.67.
I asked, I guess, a question about that. Are there any other North Carolina state school board functions taking place between now and June, or...
Oh, yes, I thought it was something this morning, you know, a few conferences coming up.
Yep, a few conferences. Isn't there a school of law in June?
There were three or four conferences.
Okay, all right. That's nice.
This is for information, any other questions? All right, Ms. Day, you have replacement of school bus financing agreement, will you and Attorney Dubison share with the board?
Dr. Williams, board members, this is an agreement for 14 replacement buses from DPI, so it's a total of 1.2 million, and DPI requires our board to enter into the agreement. However, DPI will make the payments, make all the payments for the buses, so this is not anything that our, we use local money for, or capital outlay money, anything like that, any county money for. Our board attorney has advised that since this is an installment agreement over more than three years, it also requires County Commissioner approval. And she's developed a resolution to go to the commissioners that states very clearly that this is state money that will be used for these buses, and does not require any additional funding. And that has been sent to the county manager and to the county attorney.
The reason that you and the county even have to approve it is because they have structured it such that the LEA is the borrower, and that the state is paying money on our behalf. But it is pretty much a no-risk agreement. If the state were to stop paying, you are not, you can cancel out of the agreement. So, but because they have structured it that way, you are signing a promissory note essentially, so you have to approve it, and the commissioners have to approve it. But the state will make the payments. And it's seven new buses, right?
14.
14 new buses, that's a lot.
That's great.
It's a lot in one year.
Good question, again, new board members, just trying to learn. Do we own our school buses? Does Bramble County own our school buses, or does the state of North Carolina own our school buses?
It's, it's not, it's not a dumb question. Yellow buses, I believe we own them, but the state ensures them, and the state pays for them. And the state also highly regulates what we can do with them. Activity buses, white buses, we own, we insure, and we can do much more with it.
But these are school buses?
Right.
Yellow buses.
Yellow buses.
Okay. With Gretel Kelly on the side.
And I said, we're not voting.
I think, yes, you need to approve it. Sorry, that may be a type of...
So we need action tonight, members? Okay, we need to change that.
So do I have a motion to approve? Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can you further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they're approved.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ms. Day, will you share with us Board Policy 8220 and Board Policy 9125, both our first reads tonight, gentlemen?
Yes, board members, the gifts and the quests, Board Policy 8220, our existing policy did not have a dollar figure in the, it's on the first page, it underlined that $10,000 figure, there was not a dollar figure in our current policy. So this is correcting that, and we have gotten information from surrounding counties to develop our recommendation for what this is. But this is such that the superintendent would have authorization to accept donations up to $10,000. Anything over that would come to the board before being approved.
Okay. This is your first read.
Can we waive the first read on this? Or second read, like we've done in the past?
It would take a two-third vote.
Particularly, superintendent's side.
Yes, I am.
All right, so do we need a motion to waive it and then vote?
I'd like to make that motion, but we waived the second.
Second. With the men's, further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that's two. All right, now...
Make a motion to approve this on the first read.
Second. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
The, the next board policy is Policy 9125, participation by minority businesses, and under goals, that percentage, 10%, was not included, was also a blank, but that is historically, I went back to previous board policies, and when the public hearing, I guess, before me, you know, long years ago, was had, had the board policy included the 10% of an aspirational verifiable percentage goal for this policy.
Okay, correction, 10%? Yes, sir?
Question. If you look at the very last paragraph, paragraph C, it basically undoes all the above paragraphs, unless I am reading this wrong, I mean, it basically says that this is not to be construed, let's see, I'm sorry, G, nondiscrimination, board will award public voting contracts without regard to race, religion, color, creed, national order, and sex disability. Nothing in this policy should be construed to require the board or contractors to award contracts or subcontracts to minority businesses, contractors, et cetera, including not submit the lowest responsible bid. So, that is a good statement, we don't want to discriminate, that's not our intention, but doesn't that undo all the three pages above it? Because basically, it's saying it's low bid, low responsive bid.
So the idea of the policy is that you will make extra effort to recruit and convince minority-owned businesses to submit bids, but then, once the bids are submitted, you choose, you don't choose based on race, you choose based on what you bid.
Now, the, the other question I had was females. There's 250,000 more females in North Carolina than males, there's just three or six, 5 million more females in the United States of America than males. And, and females are accepted, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, it's 60-40 ratio, and have been for 35 years. There's more female physicians than males, almost more female lawyers than males. So, I mean, it's clear that you have African-Americans, Hispanics, there are, but why are females minorities?
They're not minorities, they fall under the category of socially and economically disadvantaged when it comes to...
Which was the same.
Business ownership.
As far as, like, in front of action calls, there's so many females, so much of the 10% of the front of action calls, because they qualify themselves as a bid, something like a minority, because of the cost, essentially.
I will note, I do not believe you will find females overrepresented in the destruction business.
That's true.
Which is generally what we're talking about. But, but, I mean, it's not something the board says.
Yeah, I just was curious, as to why, the vision is so far from where it was when I was in college, as far as the damn female. Why are, are we still doing this?
Because women-owned business owners are underrepresented in the business community.
So it's not on a minority of total numbers, it's on a minority of businesses?
No, it says minority and socially or economically disadvantaged.
It's a medical...
Okay, the other question I had is, publicly-owned companies, is, you know, how do we tell who owns a publicly-owned company? IBM, you've got millions of stockholders, how do we know how many are women, how many are African-American, how many are Spanish?
What do you mean, on the board?
Well, it says here that we're supposed to try to recruit minority-owned companies, supposed to say publicly-owned company, company owned by the stockholders. If we are trying to write a contract with them, how would we know whether they comply with it?
But that's not...
There's a registration process with the, the state. I mean, we, we are required to complete reporting on what our purchases are, and how our purchasing follow under this to the state on a quarterly basis. And there's a website where we go to, we look at our vendors, what vendors we've used, and we look at if they're listed as a minority business on the state website. I mean, now, whether that's 100%, but if they've, if they've registered as a...
To be certified.
Or a woman-owned business.
And they should be.
Absolutely, they should be. And I guess, I have a couple of questions, if you've had yours.
Sure, I'm just trying to understand, makes you do, we're trying to be as fair as we can.
Oh, absolutely. Not only am I delighted to see this, I, a couple of questions. One, have we been employing this in the past? And I specifically think about the numbers that I saw when we talked about HVAC and roofing. I would like to know about the reporting out of this, because, and this is for the media, too. I haven't heard an organization in Grand County report out on minority and women business owners' participation. And I say this because this was the last job that I had in the U.S. Air Force, where I headed up an office specifically responsible for this. And the idea of outreach, I heard, and it's in here, and when I read through it, outreach is the key. And the other item that I wanted to know is, is there somebody on the staff specifically responsible for managing and overseeing this program? Because you can try and put on websites and advertise as much as you want to, somebody won't get the information. So unless you're doing outreach, you're not going to be doing an adequate job of reaching the minority and women business owners. So you need somebody who is overseeing this program regularly. Do we have that?
You're looking at them. And you have to report to the North Carolina Department of Administration on a quarterly basis.
So then, this board needs to get that report to see what level of participation there is.
Period.
That's right. Quarterly, semi-annual, or something, we need to, we need to get that information.
Great. Now, this is the first read, so it'll be brought up to the next meeting for approval.
But, Mr. Chair, is there a need, since we...
Pretty much discussed it.
We pretty much discussed it.
That's right.
I will note that you approved this previously, it's just that you neglected to fill in the blank. So the only change is the number.
10% is all that we did.
I moved that we waive the second read in this policy.
We have a second. Mr. Rivers, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, now a motion to approve.
I moved that we approve of Policy 9125.
Second, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next one, the Pledge of Allegiance, I believe. Mr. Rivers, you made this recommendation, would you like to share some of your thoughts?
Yes, sir, in the interest of time, I have a whole list of arguments why we should do it. If there's anybody who's opposed to it, then I'll be happy to, to discuss that, but basically, it's asking our students in our classrooms to do it, the county commissioners, the city commissioners do it, we did it at our graduation, our learner graduation. I think that's a very good example for our school students, for us to do that. So I recommend, I would like to move that we recite the Pledge of Allegiance at the beginning of the meeting at the same time as the invitation.
All right.
Got a question.
Oh, wait, and let's get that motion on the floor. We got a motion, we need a second, and then we'll get it on the floor for discussion. We have a second, Ms. Judy. Okay.
I don't do the pledge of allegiance in life. I'll say it. I'd still, I'd still do it. I think so. Religious choice and preference?
All right.
Ms. Davidson, correct me if I'm wrong, because I may have read something wrong, but I was reading up on this, and I saw a chart that said that it was 48 out of 50 states that were mandated to do prayer and pledge of allegiance, and North Carolina was one of those. And, and I talked to some teachers, and they all said that they're doing it in the classroom now.
Pledge of allegiance?
And all praying, you know, prayer, being about... And all praying, you know, prayer, doing it as a moment of silence.
So, what our state law requires is that recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance be scheduled on a daily basis. That is vague, but it is, local boards of education are required, shall adopt policies to require the display of the flags in the classroom when available, meaning if funded. Recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance be scheduled on a daily basis, and to provide age-appropriate instruction in the meaning and historical origins of the flag and the pledge. These policies shall not compel any person to stand, salute the flag, or recite the pledge.
Social choice.
Right.
But it is meant to be a part of the school day.
Correct.
But no one is required to participate.
That's right. Okay, but that's what I was saying, I said it was mandated to be done, but fortunately, yeah, but if it's, so, if it's mandated, do we have to vote on it? That's just my question.
That's, that's...
It's for school day, not the...
He's saying he wants it to be recited in the board meeting.
Oh, in the board meeting?
In the board meeting.
Oh, sorry. I was reading this as a legal...
That's, that's...
That's good to get it back, I'm on a different page, but anyway, I read up on it.
You sure did. All right, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And we're in clause, did you know that I have the right not to do?
Oh, absolutely.
And the reason I say that, because they need to be properly acknowledged, because if not, it's gonna sound like we'd be in a hidden thing, where we installed, where people demanded to do a certain pledge. Well, now, we have the right to do those things on all present.
Absolutely.
All right, at this time, we're going to take a break, and then I'll sign this off. I need a motion, Mr. Richson, if you would make a motion, and we're gonna be doing something at the recommendation of our attorney, a little bit different than motion to go into executive session.
Make the motion, we're going to close session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11, A1, A3, and A6, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under GS115C321, to consider matters relating to initial employment of individuals, employees, to prevent disclosure of confidential student records under GS115C42, and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve an attorney-client privilege.
Okay, we have a motion, a third, a second. Okay.
What you said? You're gonna have to trust me.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, ten-minute break. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, need a motion to approve the classified personalities presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, the Creedmore Annex.
Creedmore Annex.
Have we finished, uh-uh, because I have, while I heard my question answered about vacancy. This is open session now, and I think it said there are fourteen, and I also heard there was gonna be a job fair. My question is, do we expect to pretty much have fourteen for the remainder of the year?
I will tell you a little bit, Mr. Mayor, will you come back to this?
Sure.
This is where I get to say thank you to our HR department, they actually held the job fair last Thursday evening, Mr. Rivers came.
Fantastic.
We had a nice little steady flow in there, and then on Saturday morning again, they continued with the job fair from nine-thirty to...
Uh, twelve.
Would you like to give just a little update?
Sure, we had about, we had fifty people come in between both days, they were onsite interviews, actually received a recommendation this afternoon from one of the candidates that came on Thursday for one, they actually two, had two individuals come on Thursday, and both were being recommended by hire at two of our sites for March, so I would say it was a success. We did get a number of applicants for a number of classified positions, and we will be having some bus driver training courses pretty soon, we had people sign up for buses, or actually learn how to drive a bus, so that was pleasing as well, and candidates for the future, if any other potential certified positions were to be available and classified.
Okay, I'm pleased to know that progress is being made, however, the question is, will we be tracking those grades that have been with our teachers for a substantial portion of the year, to be able to ascertain whether or not those students have been adversely impacted?
They will be, and that book will show you that, you'll know that. This is trash, it's just trash.
And I'll tell you, when you look at this list, you do want to keep in mind, the fourteen, the number fourteen now, may not be, those positions may have gotten filled, for these, these are fourteen new, some of them are classroom positions, but some are coaches, some are classified, it's fourteen in total.
Fourteen certified.
Fourteen certified.
Certified.
Not our all-core classroom teachers.
Not our all-core. So, we, it's a constant evolving door, in some ways.
Right, and we are picking off recruitment season, actually, our first major job fair is on the eighth, sixth, excuse me, on the sixth, and we have two actually this week, one in Longwood and one at NC State on Friday. So, we're sending our teams out to recruit for, not only next year, but for this year as well.
I'd like to highly recommend to the board, if you have an opportunity, to come to one of the job fairs, it's really neat, I, I want to compliment your HR staff as well, it was just, I mean, there were balloons up, there was, it was welcoming, it was a happy atmosphere, there was a lot of representatives in here, it was, it was a well-done, well-done operation, so great. If you have a chance to go to one of these, I was just kinda curious, and I was, you could tell I was impressed.
We appreciate you, Mel.
I enjoyed it.
We put Mr. Rivers to work for him, he was greeting people as they were coming.
I was working on some guy.
He was! You should join us! We appreciate it.
Well, it says need, it's the, I'm, I'm impressed, I mean, you just did a good job.
Thank you, all of the department, though.
That's great.
That's great.
All right, did you get the answer to your question?
Yes, I got the answer to my question, but it generated, I guess, the final question. My concern is, you know, are the principals, do they have any responsibility for hiring, or is it all coming through? I mean, my point is, if principals have some responsibility for hiring, how do we evaluate their success or failure? I mean, failure is, there's a vacancy. In particular, if it's been for an ordinate period of time. So, when you begin to, you start looking at performance and how you've done, if you don't have, you know, if you're not staffed up, you can't deliver the instruction to the students. So, if the students, it's what we're all sitting around this table, are concerned about, we got to up our game. And I understand you having the job fairs, but if we got vacancies, we still not getting there. So, the whole idea is, we need a plan to make sure that we get those classrooms, that we put teachers in those classrooms. If we don't, we're failing, and so are the principals failing.
I, I got, and I gotta jump in for a minute.
Okay.
I don't think sometimes we realize how difficult it is to fill vacancies in Grand County. And the reason I say that is because a principal, West Oxford last year, they had, what, five vacancies, three or four of them, all year. And, and the bottom line, you could ask Shelby, and she'll, what's going on? There are no candidates. And you guys are out doing this, that, and the other, but, I mean, would you go here, or would you go to Wake, or Durham, where you're making twenty, thirty percent more? I mean, that's the problem, we've lost fabulous teachers in Wake, Chris Monick, I mean, one of the reasons that they left is because they could go there and work, and work for four years, and up their, or three years, and up their retirement. So, my point I'm making is, I think that there are, I think there are a lot of people working hard, are they, are we getting what we need? Absolutely not. But, this is, and it's only gonna get worse, because people are not going into this profession. What was it, at NC State?
I'm telling you.
It's down fifty percent.
It's down a lot. And we saw it again, I thought about it, I was talking to some ladies at North Carolina Central, just seeing how many grads do you have coming up, you know, because they have winter graduation too, and we're trying to all steal from the same pot, from Appalachian, from East Carolina. We've got a group of young ladies here who love to go back and recruit for us, and they may come back and be one, you know, so we, it's, it's hard.
I think, do you know how many vacancies they currently have in Wake County?
I don't.
Because I knew a couple of years ago, it was two-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, they got...
And if they've got two-hundred-and-fifty vacancies, and they're paying, is that what it is?
I don't know the current number, but they have a huge number of vacancies.
And they're paying ten, twelve thousand more a year, and they have better, newer, quite frankly, they got newer schools, they got some Taj Mahals over there, I've seen them, they got all kind of facilities, they got a social work reserve school, they got everything, and they have vacancies. I mean, it's hard, and I agree, but...
I agree.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but this is Grandville County, this is what we are responsible for. Now, either we step up to the plate, or we admit that we can't get it done. I mean, it's not, it's mutually exclusive.
No, I agree.
So, I, I hear the excuses, but that's what they are.
Well, I would just agree with you, yeah, but we're, you know...
I think we talk about reality and the use.
Yeah, I, that's the problem, it's awful.
So, then, are we admitting that we can't get it done?
No.
Oh, no.
We're gonna try, I'm gonna try.
Well, then, show, give us a plan, show us, so we have some benchmarks to evaluate whether or not we're making progress. If you're just saying, hey, last one, it was sixteen, this one, it was fourteen, the month before that, it was sixteen or whatever, you can't tell me that we're making progress.
Well, we're hiring teachers, but we're losing teachers.
It's the chicken and egg concept, and I don't know which one comes first, but I'll tell you, just at the end of the day, we worked really hard in the HR department, principals are working hard at the school level, teams are going out recruiting at universities, by the same token, we're just trying to keep who we have. I'll tell you another little issue we've had this year, is we've had a bit of a baby boom in our county. And, we just don't need to drink the water in some parts of the county.
You need to get pregnant.
We've had tons of new babies this year. And then we do have the retirees, and so, it's, it's one of those things you're just gonna have to keep working hard at, and we will, we will.
Okay. Okay, board retreat.
We're, except the annex on that.
We already skipped that, haven't we?
You can skip it. We're not gonna ask you to take action tonight, I think the staff just wanted me to sort of give you the background tonight, and take action next month. So, the short version is that it's time to look at selling the annex. By law, the steps are, first, you're gonna have to declare it surplus and not need it for school purposes, which we will do with a resolution. Then, you will need to offer it to the county commissioners, I understand they may be interested. What the law says is that it must be, they must buy it for fair market value, or a price to be negotiated between the parties. Constitution says you can't give away your property, this will come up as we are looking at your other schools that may close, you can't give it away, because it's not yours, it belongs to the taxpayers. So, in any case, we will offer it to the county, if the county does not bite, or you are not able to arrive on a price, then you have to choose a method by which to sell it. In the interest of efficiency, I propose that the resolution do all three of those things, in other words, the resolution will say, this is surplus, I direct superintendent to offer it to the county, if we are not able to reach agreement with the county, I direct this administration to sell it using this method. The methods are advertising for sealed bids, or negotiated offer, and then upset bid, or public auction, or you can exchange it for other property that you want, I have not heard that that's really a need. I have recommended the upset bid process, which means that you advertise it like any other real estate, somebody makes you an offer, but then, and they give you a deposit, but then you advertise in the newspaper, we've received an offer of a hundred thousand dollars for this property, does anybody want to put in an upset bid? And if somebody will make you an offer at least five percent higher, and put down a deposit, then you advertise that one in the newspaper and say, does anybody want to make another bid on this? We have seen properties go for more than you thought they would, using that process. So, next month, I'll bring you all of this in writing, but I think they just wanted me to see if there were questions that I could answer.
Two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars.
We'll take less than a million.
If you do want to sell it to the commissioners, and they want to buy it, I know that what the fair price is will be an issue, certainly, we would look at maybe splitting the cost of an appraisal, if they are into that, so that everybody feels comfortable that they've seen what, because I don't know when the last time a legitimate tax assessor came around.
It's every eight years here, so it could've been a while ago.
Last year.
This is last July.
Was what?
Last July.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else? Board retreat date development.
Yes, we had scheduled February ninth for board retreat, now we had one board member who could not come that day. However, we really determined after a moment, we weren't gonna have anything to share with you this end. You've already had the financial update this year, that is part of what we did last year, Ms. Davidson's already done that with us, so we figured we are in budget season, we've now officially gone into budget season, and when we need, we need to have a little more to do than, than that, because that's been done. Will you look at your calendars for me? I believe, Ms. Davidson, you were trying to do something late February, you will have met with the finance committee?
So, the district budget committee is meeting on the eleventh next Monday, and then on the twenty-sixth of February, are the two meetings that have been scheduled for the district budget.
So, we would need to have the, our meeting after you get through with that.
Right, to get the information from them, so the, so the goal of the district budget committee is kind of twofold, is to educate about the budget, but then also to get feedback about priorities and that kind of thing, and that's gonna be mostly the work for the, for the second meeting, the twenty-sixth.
And then what would you want at that point for the board?
You would get that as information, you know, and we'd probably have more information at that time about where we're at with the budget.
We also need to spend some time on Dr. McLean's performance, we're scheduled to do that at mid-year, and we're a little bit later than mid-year, but we do need to spend some time on that, we've talked about this.
That'd be fine. Now, her second committee meets on the twenty-sixth, we do not have to meet on a Saturday, it might be better in the eve...
What about the twenty-eighth?
The evening of the twenty-eighth, you wanna look at your calendar?
That's Thursday evening.
Beth, Beth's not looking good.
Beth, what's your honor?
It's a Thursday, but...
That's the night she's, that's the...
Is there Stephen Mestrich? Stephen Mestrich.
I'll do what I need to do.
No, don't make her miss that.
Okay, then let's go into March.
We have a board meeting on the fourth.
I'm not that entire week.
That week, okay.
The week prior to twenty-eighth, was that too soon, have your data?
She won't have her second meeting until the twenty-sixth.
Gotcha, gotcha.
How long is it gonna take to present this information?
I don't think it will take very long, we will have at that point met with principals and gotten their input, we will have met with the budget committee twice, we'll have their input, and then remember how we sort of prioritize what we wanted to take. Now, here's the other thing, don't forget, I will need you all to join me at the commissioner retreat, February, what is that, February twenty-first? February twenty-first, the commissioner retreat is that evening, and so I understand, we will not be first this year, we will be towards the, the agenda this year.
What do we have to do?
We are presenting that evening, we've been asked to talk about how we've spent the fifteen million they gave us, what else, there was something else we...
We need to ask for the other eleven.
Yeah, we need to bring that up.
We need to add that one that evening.
Well, if it's not gonna take long, could we just...
Well, if it's not gonna take long, could we just come in a little early on the 4th, and have it presented to us before?
And just do one night? Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
That isn't a bad idea.
And what if we had a little?
We have some heart pills today, yeah.
Don't get it. I feel it coming.
That was smart, anyway.
Why don't we do a little dinner that night, since it's gonna be a little longer evening for everyone? Is there any way, when you say early, what do you mean, Mr. Rivers?
Well, that's what I was asking, how long would it take to present this? If it's only gonna take 30 minutes, then we could get here at about quarter to six, have it, and then take a couple minutes break, and go right into our meeting.
We, we really do need to, at some point, spend some time on her, her performance, her mid-year review.
Well, I thought we were just doing the budget.
We should have that also.
I'd said that when we do the meeting with budget, we also need to make sure that we address this. But we can, I'll do it however you want to do it.
The 4th is good, is the 27th, is that available?
But you're gonna be, you're gonna be here for her evaluation.
Well, yeah, I do. I'm not that whole week.
So we gotta do it before the budget.
You can still do the budget, yes, you could.
Is the 20, 27th is not good for you, February 27th?
No, that's fine. It's not good for Beth.
No, the 28th is not good for Beth. Is the 27th good for you? Is it good for you?
It'll make it all work. It'll make it work.
I won't be here, right?
I'm not sure our ministers will be here on Wednesday night.
I won't be here.
I could, just, from that time, but.
But I guess two of our chair and vice chair won't be here, so.
Top of this one, then.
Then, no.
Okay.
We need to appoint a temporary.
This quarter, you've been this past Thursday, so if I can, won't hold that back. I mean, I could, it's long.
All right, yeah, well, I will be here, so I'll just appoint somebody, that's fine. Let's stop and think about it, because we're all so tired that we're not making any sense. And when Beth doesn't make sense, we're in trouble.
Beth, I hope you will allow your staff to come in a little bit later tomorrow.
We need to. I don't know. Look at Stan, he's about to fall out of jail.
All right, do I have a motion, Richard?
No, I have a, I have a question, two questions. Are we not going to have a retreat now?
We.
We need to.
We do need to get some time together.
Well, I mean, my, because my second question is, based on the committees that were identified this evening, one committee is gonna be making preparations to give this board a report about going forward. So the idea is, we need to set down some timetables if we're gonna get things done, because this is, this school year, when June rolls around here, we know what we're doing 19, 20, but we might need to do something that following year besides web and health and life sciences. So as much advanced notice as you can get, you need to know what we're working on, and we need to be able to tell you what studies or what information we think we might need.
May I make a recommendation regarding the committees?
You may.
I'd love it if the committees would not wait for the retreat, and go ahead and possibly get together, and then they can report out something to us at the retreat.
And what day are we trying to retreat?
Well, we haven't said that yet. We haven't said that, but I agree, there are several pieces we have, we've put on the table tonight for retreat, but I don't want it to delay what committees need to do in the meantime.
Can we have the retreat, since there's apparently some business taking care of a brief retreat prior to the 26th? We won't have Ms. Day's figures, but we can take care of Dr. McLean's.
That may be the best thing to do.
Take care of Dr. McLean's review, which if we can start now getting to March, it's almost the end of the year.
How about the 26th?
26th?
Yeah. She's got to meet in the.
She, we don't need, we're talking.
We don't need to meet with her, she just, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, yeah, we, if we've got other things to do, like what, what it's talking about, we gotta do her performance, your mid-year performance, it can maybe just be an hour long, maybe it doesn't need to be really long, but we get together and we knock out the stuff that's, we're delaying on.
Get some other stuff.
What if we looked at Monday, the 25th? Would that work?
That would be good for me.
It works for me.
Is Monday, the 25th?
26.